I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular Board of Education is on Tuesday, January 23 at 7:30 PM in the Board of Ed Meeting Room. I will keep my remarks short to nonexistent this evening. Thank you all, members of my board, for spending all day, truly all day, on Saturday, talking about this huge budget book. Thank you to the members of administration who prepared, who answered lots of questions, and who we look forward to talking with this evening. Thank you to the members of staff and to parents and other members of the community who turned it, tuned in in person or otherwise, for their engagement around this process. Tonight is the first in a couple of meetings where we'll talk about answering a lot of the questions that were raised, starting on Saturday. With that, I know we do want to meet again on the 17th. Can I just get an understanding of whether or not we think we could have quorum that evening? Yes, yes, no, not sure, not sure yet. Okay, so we're not sure, we're looking iffy. We'll send out an email just to see if we can get people that evening. All right, hopefully we will meet again next Wednesday. All right, thank you all. With that, I'll turn it to public comment.
Good evening. If anyone in person would like to participate in public comment, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have up to three minutes to comment. Please note the timer. And if you are a representation of any organization, please state the organization's name.
Laura Pesh Gray, are you ready for me?
Yes, go, sorry.
Sorry. Laura Pesh Gray, 11 Parsons Walk. I'm a parent of two middle schoolers in eighth grade. I would like to thank all the members of the DEA and staff for the incredible amount of time spent. I was also on that call remotely from 9:00 to 5:30. I'd like to just evaluate and just bring up some of the things that were brought up, but just drill down a little bit and have further questions. Regarding the addition of the two assistant principals, both for the middle and high school, I think the addition of assistant principals at the expense of core curriculum teachers seems to be, to me, detrimental to students and teachers. I don't understand the tangible benefits of this position and what they will bring to our students, even though it was outlined with some bullets, like increased access with building level administrators. I mean, we can get that through guidance counselors. I mean, I know I have pretty good access. I also want to point out that in the budget page 108, district projections for, like median projections, the high school enrollment is projected to decline while middle has modest to low increases. So how do we justify a new assistant principal in both schools with declining student enrollment numbers? Second, I would greatly appreciate the art teacher leader position to be reevaluated. Although Newt, Canaan, and Westport have similar models, the number of art and music teachers is much greater in Darien. The art department at the high school is significantly larger than music. This further justifies the need for the art teacher leader position to stay. Since you have the art teacher leader doing this job as well as teaching, I assume this person is a very small percentage of the overall budget. That's an assumption. Therefore, I assume the negative impact of the budget will be minimal if you keep this person on. But the change will have a huge effect on students and teachers, taking someone who oversees a department that is more than twice the size of the high school out of her area of expertise, which is music, into art. I hope you will take these points under consideration. We all know that our town prides itself on excellent sports as well as our school system. It's a little bit upsetting and shocking to see that there's not many cuts being done on the sports front. I know we addressed this on Saturday, but I drilled down and have some additional questions. In the portion of the projected budget, which is $381,000, they said that the Board of Ed spends 30% of that and the parents spend 70% of it. But when you look on page 169, it shows that the cost of sharing is those sports are only hockey, skiing, and squash. So there's like $200,000 allocated for that split, that 70-30 split, but the other 181,000 is not clear on what that's covered and how it splits out. Does that mean the district picks up the rest, like lacrosse and football?
Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else in person?
Hi, my name is Whitney Ranson of 19 Whining Lane. I have a second grade daughter and a fourth grade son at Tokoni Elementary School. I'm not only a concerned parent, but I'm also the PTO Chair representing the Tokoni Parent Community. At Tokoni, we are concerned about reducing the number of instructional aides. Instructional aides are an invaluable asset to a classroom and to our school community. They're consistent, reliable, and develop special relationships with the children in their classrooms. Not only are they providing teacher support, but by knowing and understanding the children in their classrooms, they can better cater to their specific educational needs and emotional wellbeing. We know the number of students needing educational support, including 504s and IEPs, is at an all-time high. The reduction in instructional aides ignores the greater need we see in our student body. Our second through fifth grade teachers need support. Removing aides from these classrooms will stretch many of our teachers thin. Not having extra help is also a disadvantage to our children. Under your current proposal, you are planning to have 23 third grade students in a Tokoni classroom with only one teacher and no additional support. How is that manageable? How do you expect those children will receive the individualized attention they deserve? I recognize having enough building substitutes is a current problem. But why is the attempt to fix that problem one that will create a new problem and put our own children at a disadvantage? I'm an advocate for educators and to keep our instructional aides. Thank you.
Anyone else in person? If anyone online would like to participate in public comment, please use the raised hand icon. Barry Palmer, you are unmuted and recognized.
Barry Palmer, DEA President, I live in Darien. Good evening. I also want to thank the board for their thorough review of the proposed budget on Saturday. In 2015, the district was serving 627 students identified as needing special education services. As of October 1st of this school year, we are now serving 969 identified students. Those numbers represent an increase from 12% of the student population to 20%. At the middle school, in just the last three years, despite the temporary dip in enrollment, the total number of students in special education programming has actually increased from 181 students to 207 students. In addition to those 207 students, we also have 141 students currently receiving 504 accommodations at the middle school. The point of sharing this data is not to question our eligibility criteria, but to simply remind us all of the individual students behind the tables and graphs. For all of us, from the board to administration to teachers and paraprofessionals, it is not only our legal responsibility, but also our moral responsibility to provide all of our students instruction that they can access and also provide them with the appropriate amount of rigor to meet their needs and challenge them appropriately. This responsibility to differentiate applies to all of our students. I know this board takes their responsibility as seriously as your teachers do. Given where we are as a district in terms of growing identification rates, COVID remediation, and lower test scores, it is irresponsible to take resources and staff away from our students with the only rationale being a class size policy the district created for an entirely different student population. We look forward to partnering with the board in our shared commitment to providing our students and our community the school system they deserve. Thank you.
Jen Fisher, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Jen Fisher, DEA Vice President, and I live in Danbury, Connecticut. Thank you to the Board of Education for the opportunity to speak tonight and address a few of the major impacts that the proposed budget will have on the daily lives and learning of our students. The elementary curriculum is fluid and an area that this district must focus on. The superintendent is proposing to create five stipend positions to compensate for the cut of our elementary curriculum coordinator. When this teacher position leader, teacher leader position was created four years ago, it was in response to another administrative restructuring, where we went from having two elementary curriculum administrators to one. The elementary curriculum coordinator is an essential teacher leader and liaison that works to maintain consistency in teaching and learning across five elementary schools and central services. The first line of our strategic plan is to enhance teaching and learning, and yet this proposed budget cut is an essential position that will help the district navigate changes and help maintain our high standard of teaching and learning. To take this amount of work and inefficiently duplicate it to five different schools makes me question the success of this model. Teachers are spread thin with their responsibilities already, and this model makes it difficult to enhance anything without a leader at the helm. Finally, cutting our instructional paraprofessionals is a devastating blow to elementary classroom teachers. Yes, currently, they are often being pulled to cover classes, but that is more of a result of the district eliminating the internship program than it is of other things. Last year's buildings had two to three building subs in addition to two college interns who would serve as substitutes when they were not student teaching. Now we have full-time building subs, but no interns. So it was a net loss for us, which has resulted in teachers losing their instructional aide support time because they are being pulled to cover meetings and professional development sessions. In classrooms filled with general education students, students in SRBI, students with IEPs, 504s, and our gifted and talented students, we need the essential support of instructional paraprofessionals in order to provide the best differentiated instruction to all of our students. Last year, the board fought to reinstate an additional instructional para because of the value that they saw in the work that they do and the support they give to teachers, but more importantly, to students. And now we wish to cut those positions down. Additionally, looking at the vast differences in enrollment by elementary building, it simply does not make sense to have the same amount of instructional paras and building subs in each building. When you have one building with student enrollment of 515 and another with enrollment of 335, good management recognizes that equal does not always result in equity. I wish to thank the Board of Education for their diligence in considering the impacts of the proposed cuts to student supports and therefore student learning opportunities in this budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Christina Donaghyan, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Christina Donaghyan, world language teacher at the high school. I live in Monroe. Good evening, Dr. Adley and members of the board. I would like to speak directly to the elimination of staff within the world language department. The implications of eliminating staff in the world language department would create a harmful effect on our students and staff within the department, which can currently boast that not only do the vast majority of our student population take at least one year of world language, but that also continues with language study through senior year. Like other disciplines such as math and science, for example, there is a world language state requirement for graduation. In addition, almost half of our graduating seniors earn the Connecticut State Steel Seal of Literacy. Behind these successes is a dynamic cohesive department that works as one unit, and the elimination of any position within this unit would cause unnecessary disorder and prevent our teachers and students from performing and achieving at their best. The rise in class enrollment size by eliminating staff members will clearly go against the National Governing Board of World Languages. The American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages recommends that world language class sizes are optimally between 12 to 15 students. Each year, several of us have had to actually find additional desks to move into our classrooms to accommodate classes of 23 to 24 students. In terms of the recruitment and retention of the best world language teachers, how can we possibly recruit talent in the future if the last person hired is always aware that they will be the first one to be eliminated in situations just like the one presented to us in this budget? I personally recruited our last hired teacher from another Dirk A. district, and he was reassured in the hiring process that Darien does not reduce in force and that he need not worry about being the last hired, despite coming to Darien with over 25 years of teaching experience and glowing reviews from his previous school. We will not be able to attract this kind of talent if Darien is known as a district that undervalues the importance of second language learning as the effects of these proposed budget changes demonstrate. I encourage you, Dr. Adley and members of the board, to reconsider the elimination of these positions. Our ability to meet the needs of our students with our current staffing level is already compromised. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more raised hands at this time.
With that, I will move it to the superintendent's report, Dr. Adley.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your attendance, both our staff and our parent community and those people online. I much appreciate your comments and participation. So we did meet with the State Department of Education regarding the literacy waiver. We'll bring that through the Curriculum Subcommittee, but the short version of it is that the waiver process, if reiterated, has concluded. We have requested personal feedback that has not been provided. And the only option we have, certainly the only option that was provided was to continue to work with one of their literacy representatives. So we'll talk more about that. It seems to be the same feedback that districts around us and are experiencing, even across Connecticut. I'll let the students talk about midterms, and if you don't mind, I will share with them. At your leisure, you might be wanting to study for an AP exam or something or whatever exams you're taking tomorrow. So feel free to step out when you feel as if you need to, if you feel as if you need to prepare more for tomorrow. The Area 6 legislative breakfast is on Friday, January 12th at 8:00 AM at Ox Ridge Elementary School. You're more than welcome to join us, all the board members. If you currently have said you cannot come in the last minute, you feel as if you free up, please feel free to stop by. Mrs. McCammon, our board chair, is the actual co-chair of Area 6, and we have various legislators who are attending as well. Currently, there's about 25 at the last look. I'm guessing that's going to get over 30, 30 to 35 participants. We have posted for the permanent position of the Ox Ridge Principal, as we said we would, over the Christmas winter break. So that is open, and we'll be looking at resumes as they come in. Parent focus groups, we did provide feedback to parents. Thank you for all the parents, because we actually had more parents than literally we could accommodate. We had 15 for each group, for each school, so to speak. But we extended that to 20 to each group, and even with that, we had more parents who wanted to participate. So thank you, everybody who actually submitted, received a notification of one degree or another today, either that you were randomly selected or regrettably that you weren't. So thank you, and we look forward to those focus groups next week. We are continuing to work with our tri-state visiting team for the arts. The visitation, just a reminder, is January 31st through February 2nd. I want to thank the parents who joined us at the middle school for some math professional learning. I think they had a wee bit of insight as to the learning that's taking place in the classrooms. We have PDAC, 45 staff members will be meeting tomorrow with Julie and also Amy and with Barry, actually, in March to facilitate the next steps in the teacher evaluation plan and administrator evaluation plan, and they will have a presentation here this evening. On January 12th, we have PD, so Friday is a PD day for the staff, parents. Just a reminder that the students will be home with you for that particular day. Our professional development is focused on mathematics, instructional rounds, discipline-based PLCs, and various assessments and early literacy for some of our special education support services. Tri-state preparations continue, as I mentioned. Winter concert, winter concert music festivals, presentations are on. That's for Royal on the 17th and Ox Ridge on the 19th. The district is closed, as you know, January 15th in recognition of Martin Luther King Day. The Curriculum Committee is on January 11th. That is literacy and curriculum priorities. Just a reminder that the Board of Education Communications Committee, because of the communication focus groups are meeting, that meeting is not on. I will say it's been canceled, it hasn't been scheduled for January 17th. It will not be scheduled, and we'll send out the rest of the dates accordingly. Thank you.
Student representative reports.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back and Happy New Year. Recently, we came back to school as a Darien community, and now Darien High School is rolling into midterms, which will start bright and early tomorrow at 8:00 AM. And we wish everyone the best of luck in these coming weeks with these exams. And just a reminder to everyone to, you know, take time for ourselves and continue to persevere as we do. We are also coming into the close of the first semester, and we wish all the best to our teachers and our faculty who are working so hard to close out these first wonderful couple of months.
Good evening. We also had two recent student-run successful events. So the first one was on our last day of school prior to the start of Christmas break. And the DHS Student Government held their first ever annual, hopefully annual, reindeer games in which all four grades, including some faculty members, competed for a ice cream party, and the seniors won, not surprisingly. So we're looking forward to that. And last week, the Darien High School National Honors Society held their annual cocoa and cramb for freshmen, where the seniors and juniors can help tutor freshmen on any midterm preparation they have to get done. So that's all we have.
Thank you both. I heard good things about both events. And best of luck to both of you on your midterms. Thank you for being here tonight. Approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting held on December 12th, 2023. Robyn, seconded by Sarah, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Board committee reports. Okay, I will report on behalf of HHR. HHR was at the Board of Selectmen last evening and also at the RTM Education Subcommittee. We are attempting to, we are seeking another appropriation of just over 19 million. The Board of Selectmen voted 5-0 in favor, and the RTM Education Committee voted unanimously in favor of the additional appropriation. We will be meeting with the Board of Finance on the evening of the 16th, and the RTM Finance will, Finance and Budget will follow in the days subsequent to that. If both of those are, well, if at least if Board of Finance passes and presumably RTM F and B, we'll be at RTM Education on the 22nd for the additional appropriation. It takes 10 days from that period for the money to clear, so we would begin signing contracts with our construction manager, and then subsequently with the trades in early, late January, early February. My thanks to that committee who has worked hard to make sure that answers from all of those boards and committees are prepared and ready to go. Assuming everything moves forward, we would continue on schedule to put shovels in the ground in June of this year 2024. With that, I will move to presentations and discussions. There's a question. Oh, pardon, Dave.
Sick question, if I can. When is the Board of Ed voting on the 19 million?
The Board of Ed does not vote on the 19 million.
We don't vote on the 19 million?
We do not vote on the 19 million.
Could you remind me why that is?
Well, we voted on the design back in January of last year. So at this point, this is a change in price, but it's not a change in the, in the design of the project.
So we don't think the board should be consulted on 19 million dollars?
We don't have a role in, this is the only thing that the Selectmen and the Board of Finance are voting on, is the increased bonding.
Thank you.
Okay, that discussion on the strategic stat, well, let me answer further. If the Board of Selectmen were to come to us and say, we think you should use town properly differently, or we think that from a policy perspective, you need to do something different vis a vis build renovating or new, or if the Board of Finance were to come to us and say there's a financing issue, then if, and were to fail, this were to fail, then it would kick back to us. But at this stage, there is no mechanism for the Board of Ed. Discussion on the Strategic Staffing and Scheduling Report. Mr. Levinson.
So we should have online Mr. Nate Levinson. Mr. Levinson is the president of New Solutions, who conducted the Strategic Staffing and Scheduling Report. So we've invited Nate to be with us this evening to talk through his work and also to have the opportunity for board dialogue. Nate is an author, an educator, and a leader. He's been a professional colleague for some time. He has worked in many states, most of the states. He's worked with probably over 300 school districts or thereabouts, worked around the world too on these particular topics. So with that, I see Nate has joined in. Nate, thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate your time. And can you see, can you see all the board members relatively or?
Yes, I can, and can folks see and hear me?
We can, and we will turn it over to you to lead us through, to lead the board through the discussion, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you very much. Nice to be with you tonight.
Nate, could you just, if you could just speak a little bit louder or get a bit closer?
Yeah, let me see if I can turn up the microphone as well.
That is a wee bit better, thank you.
And again, if my voice falls off, please let me know. My name's Nate Levinson. I am president of New Solutions K-12, and as Superintendent Adley shared, I helped lead the staffing review. I wanted to take just a minute to walk through my background, review the purpose of the study, share with you the methodology we used, give you an overview of the findings, and then take your questions as well. So again, my background, the perspective I bring to this. One, I have been a school board member, so I've sat in your seats for six years. I've also been an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction and a superintendent as well. And for the last 15 years or so, I have consulted to about 300 school districts in 30 states. The topics are generally the intersection of how do you raise achievement and expand services for students and to do that in a cost-effective way. So certainly, things like staffing analysis are very central to the kind of work we do. The work we were asked to do in the district had a fairly narrow focus. Essentially, the question was, given that you have existing staffing guidelines and existing contractual obligations and collective bargaining agreements and past practices, given the rules that are currently in place, and keeping first and foremost the goal to be student-centered. What we mean by student-centered, nothing in this other work could reduce the amount of services provided to students to take away programming to change what they're currently getting. But so essentially, the question is, given your current rules and the current things you are doing for kids, how precisely or not are you applying your current rules? And can you provide the current services with the same more or less staff to do so? I want to be clear that this is an analytical analysis. That was our job. Your job as leaders is to take the data we give you and make value judgments from it. We did not recommend anything. We provided objective data so that you all can make those value judgments. We think there's value in having good information so you can make good decisions. The methodology that we used to look at this and to answer that question said, obviously, first, we needed to understand what are their current rules around staffing, contracting, class size guidelines. So we met both with central office leaders and school leaders to understand those rules, obviously multiple back and forths to make sure we had clarity there. We received a lot of data from the district. We reviewed it, made sure we understood it, to make sure we really understood how things happen in your schools. We met with principals to review both the data we received, to understand your schedules, the course offerings, to really make sure we had a good baseline understanding of the current programming. From that, we, in an objective manner, applied your current rules and again, asked the question, given the number of kids you will have next year at the elementary, and I believe the, and next year at the elementary, and I believe the, the analysis was current year staffing at the middle school and current year enrollment, given the number of kids you have and what you're offering and the contractual requirements, how does your staffing compare to that? And, you know, from our, our perspective, it does seem to be a best practice to have great clarity on class size guidelines, to obviously have clarity on what you want to provide to your students. And then I think more and more districts are trying to marry those guidelines and offerings and try to do it with a greater level of precision. That is certainly a trend we are seeing across the country. And we're also seeing a, a trend to kind of update and adjust staffing as enrollment shifts. In some districts, that happens quite often. In some, some school levels, that happens quite often. In other places, it might happen less often. All the trends seem to be towards more precision and more frequent adjusting of staffing. But again, ultimately, that's your decision. What we found was as follows. And I know you've had a chance to hear some of these findings, but for the elementary classroom teachers, you know, from, given your class-sized guidelines, there's incredibly high alignment between what your guidelines say staffing should be and what the staffing is and will be. So elementary classroom teachers very, very tightly connected to your guidelines. When it came to the question of elementary, we use the term specialists, this is art, music, PE, and other classes of the like, what we saw was that there was in fact more staff than absolutely required to provide all the current number of sections. So what, what we mean by that is, given that the number of classrooms you're going to have in an elementary school is driven by how many kids are enrolled in each trade in your class size guidelines, you add up how many classrooms there will be. You look at how often those classrooms go to art or music or Spanish or library. And then we just ask the question, for all the classes that will be offered, for the frequency that you're currently offering them, do you have just right too many or too few staff? And what we saw, and I think page six of the report is probably the best summary, is, and this is not uncommon finding, that there is actually a little more capacity in the teaching staff than, than needed. This does take into account things like travel time between schools and other factors. I, I think it's also important to note that while these numbers, I believe, are accurate, there's always, and I think this is a question a lot of boards ask, like, how precise does real life and these kind of analyses match? And the answer is that they match pretty darn well, but not exactly. So if you looked at like page six, it said, hey, there's 12.1 additional potential staff capacity, 12.1 FTE. We would not generally recommend that you move to 12.1 as a reduction, no matter what your circumstances. But that directionally, it says, you know, there is a fair amount of capacity there. We also know that school districts have become better and more sophisticated at scheduling as they have to be. And obviously, it will take slightly more sophisticated scheduling as staffing numbers decline some. But so our sense, when I did look at what was in the proposed budget, it seemed that it was a pretty modest step. And a step that people should feel very, very comfortable, still leaves a fair amount of capacity. And the difference between theoretical, actual, and your reality is still a very, very comfortable margin at the elementary level. At the secondary level, a, a similar kind of analysis is done where again, we look at enrollment at each grade level. We look at how many sections you have at each grade level. And obviously, every section at a grade level takes math, science, social studies, English. And we again, ask the question, how many sections in total would you need to offer all of your students the, the current offering you have today? You clearly have a more complicated rule, if you will, for how many of those classes a teacher can teach. Some can teach four, some can teach five, some can teach five, obviously only under certain conditions. We, we did believe we understood those rules. And as we looked at that, and this again, should not probably be a large surprise, that there, there was some additional capacity. And you see that come up again, applying your, your current class size guidelines. And the reason I said it might not be a surprise is you're forecasting, were there no change in staffing, that your class sizes would be smaller than your current guidelines. So that showed some availability for capacity reductions at the middle school with four classes. We also noted that you, you have a number of teachers who by contract could teach a fifth period, but there isn't a need for that fifth period currently. So they teach four. We have pointed out that there is this possibility to ask those, some of those teachers to teach a, a math or an English intervention. Certainly in a post-pandemic world, and even before the pandemic, there are some students, not every student, but some students who greatly benefit from extra time to learn some of the things that they haven't yet mastered, concepts that they're struggling with. And we know that the most skilled folks to provide some of those services are your, are subject teachers. So we do think there's a, an opportunity within your current staffing and within your current contract to expand some intervention offerings. And then lastly, in a similar way, we took a look at the, both world language and performing arts, wellness, visual arts, computer technology, the, the non-core classes, and also saw some additional capacity there, less so than we saw on the core side of things. So that's what the analysis shows you. And again, that's math. You all as leaders have to take that data, which we do think is accurate and objective, and then decide what's the best use of your limited resources. I, I think that is the quick overview. Definitely happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Nate.
Anything you want to add, Alan, or members of staff, before the board have questions?
Nope.
Okay, I'll open it to board questions.
I'll start. On the, one of the, we got a very specific question about music and how different music teachers teach different. I know we have at the elementary school, for example, we have a music class, but we also offer band and strings. That's really a different mechanism. But I was just curious, do we have any concerns about music teachers being able to teach the right kind of, having the right expertise to teach the right kind of musical skill?
Great question. And I think you'll see there are, there are a couple of cautions in our report. I want to answer that question two ways. One, obviously not every music teacher is interchangeable. And were you to cut, well, I'll say right to the decimal place, you would want to be very cautious about that. There seems to be no indication from the superintendent's budget that you are cutting anywhere near to the decimal place. But we do think it is a practical and reasoned question to do the next analysis that says, hey, if we were to reduce some there, to, to look at that next level of detail that says, we are, the, the research, or excuse me, the data will definitely say that the total FTE is what the total FTE needs to be. But making sure you have the right number of strings people versus percussion versus whatever the other mixes are, that, that is not a complicated analysis to run. It was beyond the scope of what we did. But I think it is a reasonable next step to say, hey, before we finalize this, let's just make sure we've got that, that next level of detail. I suspect you will be fine, but we don't want to suspect. You should want to know.
Thank you. Julie.
Yeah, I'm going to follow up on that. So when I'm looking at this and I see that there are 10.8 total projected FTEs for music at the elementary school, are we including in there those individuals who teach strings and band? Because those are different teachers than the teachers who teach music. I don't think we have two plus FTEs per elementary school. So I'm concerned we've lumped them all together. And that is lumping unique skill sets in a way that I don't think we can manage without teasing that back out.
And I agree with you. Yes. So that does, so the, the way the data was given to us, it put all of music together. I, I think both of your questions are very legitimate. It is not a difficult or complicated analysis to run. But if I were in your shoes, and Alan were happy to help you with that analysis, I, I do think it is not a complicated analysis, but I think it is one you would want to run to, to be certain.
Okay. Yeah, we'd have to figure out how to handle that because music is a special that all elementary students participate in. Strings and, I'm not using the right terminology because I'm too far away from it.
Band and orchestra.
It is band, so band and orchestra basically at the elementary level are not for every student. And they're elective, they're pullouts, and they're, again, different discreet teachers, and we need to manage that separately or else that would be a drastic change to how these programs operate.
And I want to be very clear on, you know, our goal, and I believe it was clearly the direction we got from the, the superintendent and the leadership team, this analysis asks the question to provide exactly what you're currently providing. How much staff do you need? So there's nothing in this analysis that's supposed to lead to a change or a reduction in how many kids take chorus, band, trumpet. And so that is the design principle, is nothing gets taken away. I agree with the two folks who have already shared that splitting music out into its component parts and rerunning that line item, if you will, makes good sense.
Sarah.
Can I, I would like to ask that we do that analysis. My second point is, a couple of former members have reminded me of this, and I need some help with the history lesson. But previously, we, we operated our elementary music with fewer staff, and then we added staff because it wasn't working. So I, I would like to go back and kind of, I don't know, I don't, I think it was before your time, but if we.
I think it was, yes.
We did add elementary music teachers because the traveling and the itinerary, you know, that it wasn't working out. So I don't know if anybody has the history of that.
I, I do, do not have the history of that. However, this also takes into consideration a, a teacher being itinerant between buildings. So, so it recognizes we have some who actually are in that phase right now. And it accommodates for that event if that should be the case.
All right. Do you remember what, that?
That was, that was before me, but can I just assure you that Amy and I have already been talking to Colleen Thompson about just what we're discussing here, strings versus choral versus band. And we will continue the work with Mr. Levinson to make sure. So the reductions that we've suggested are a total FTE. We may end up taking a little more from one place or the other, but we all, we've already started the conversations with Colleen about lessons.
If I could add one other thing, you know, I have worked with, I, I'm guessing now, but it's between 500 and 1,000 elementary schools through, through the years. And there's a phrase you will hear a lot, often from a principal that says, you know, I can't make this schedule work with one music teacher or 1.8 art teacher or 1.6 PE teachers. That is something you hear a lot. And in some cases, that's true. And in other cases, particularly in cases where they've run these kind of numbers, what, what they're really saying is, and this is no insult to any principal, what they're really saying is, given the way we schedule, given the way staff were assigned to my building versus somebody else's building, given my own personal scheduling expertise, I do not know how to build that schedule to make it work. And let's be very clear, you know, Marzano, a great educational expert, said principals are supposed to be good at 21 things, which I consider to be at least 22 many. But if it's 21 things that principals were supposed to be good at, scheduling wasn't one of them. So sometimes, I will say, two out of three times when a school says, we can't make it work with the staff we have, I'd say two out of three times, that is a technical scheduling challenge, not a staffing challenge. And then the other third of the time, it's because there was shared staff and that each school was trying to build their schedule independent of the schools that they shared staff with. So one of the things that, and again, you're not really cutting to the bone, at least in this budget projection, but as the staffing gets a little tighter, there is a, there is value in making sure that there's some expertise helping to build the schedules. And if you're going to have shared staff, it means all the principals who are sharing staff have to build their schedules as a set. We often recommend they physically be in the same room when they do it. And so you can put up what I'll call artificial barriers to efficiently utilizing your, your staff.
Robyn.
I just wanted to follow up one clarification, Marge. So and, and on this, on the analysis on page six, there is a footnote that says the analysis does not account for individual music lessons in grade three through five. And those are when the students are learning strings or learning their new band instrument. That I think, and I don't know if that's during the day that they do that or if that is after school. I just wanted to make sure that this analysis would continue what we have in place right now.
During the day and it will continue.
Katie. Thank you. On Saturday, we had spoken about, I think that you referred to them, Mr. Levinson, as a couple of cautions in the report. And I was hoping that you might be able to go through some of the limitations of this report, noticing that, you know, breaking out gen, general music versus the strand instructional courses being one, some of the staffing guidelines at the middle school. If you could just go through the limitations that you see in this report, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. So I, I think the, the limitations go as follows. Were you to take these numbers and say, New Solution says it's 12.1 or it's 6.8, and then actually reduce by 12.1 or 6.8, going to 100%, me, that, that's a caution. It doesn't mean that it couldn't be done. And I will tell you that I have clients in low-spending states, in low-spending districts, who absolutely, absolutely do go to that, that 0.1 level of precision. But they have, those kinds of places have built expertise in scheduling, expertise in class assignments, expectations of flexibility. So I, I think trying to get to exactly these numbers is a caution for a, a district that I don't think has been doing this for decades. Certainly, I did take a look at the proposed budget and it didn't feel to us that you were taking it to an extreme. But I definitely want, I don't want anybody thinking, hey, why didn't they go, you know, Levinson said you could go down to 12.1 or 6.8. We, we would not recommend that. I, I think the second thing, the second caution is that scheduling will get slightly more technically complicated, not more complicated than, you know, 40,000 other schools in the country. But it is always easier to schedule when there's a lot of excess capacity. So I, I think that you would not want to ask a principal to unilaterally, independently be tasked with, quote, making all this work. We believe, my colleague and I just wrote a book on scheduling, It's Time for Strategic Scheduling. And, you know, we really advocate strongly for this central office, school-based partnership when it comes to scheduling. And I think that's a, a valuable caution. And I think probably the third valuable caution is, you just want to continue to monitor your enrollment. You know, again, from what I saw in your budget proposal, you don't seem to be a, a district that adds or, or kids, you know, 50 or 100 kids move between now and September. But I've certainly worked in districts where there is a fair amount. But I've certainly worked in districts where there is a fair amount of in and out movement of students. And this was a moment in time for enrollment. And if you were really expecting big swings in enrollment, you would need to reevaluate these numbers.
Did you look through our enrollment report? Was that part of the study, I assume, and based on what you've seen?
You all provided us enrollment projections. We've also seen enrollment history. And for the most part, you are what I would call a, a slow change in enrollment kind of district, which is true of most smaller suburban districts. Particularly in the Northeast. So I don't, at least from what we've seen, I'm not worried about big enrollment shifts between now and September. But that's always a caution. New apartment building goes up and it wasn't taken into account. Yes, these numbers become problematic because it didn't anticipate that.
Asking a question, just on the enrollment side. Why was it that the elementary analysis was based on projected staffing and enrollment? But the middle school analysis was based on current staffing and enrollment?
Again, this went to data availability in large part. So the district had made a very specific forecast for next year's elementary staffing and enrollment and number of class sizes. So one of the things that really drives so much of the elementary special staffing is how many classrooms? How many classroom sections? How many first grade, second grade, third grade classrooms are there? And the district had already had those projections, so it allowed us to do that. Typically, we don't see this time of year that level of detail available of how many kids are in each, each class at the middle school level. And again, given that you're not seeing dramatic changes in middle school enrollment, and given that the recommendation is not driving down to that very, very, very last 10th of an FTE. What the district asked us to do was very typical and seemed very reasonable to us.
Katie. Thank you. I'm curious, coming back to the scope of this report, one of the things that you mentioned was that special education was not considered in this. So I'm curious as to what other impact that might have. Surely, sorry, just one second, just to be specific about one thing. Surely, is it right that we have adaptive PE classes at the elementary as well? So if, so she said yes, Mr. Levinson. So I'm curious if you, can you just let us know if you factor that into the schedule about adaptive classes and how that might impact staffing?
Dr. Levinson, just to just to, Dr. Levinson, just to support what Katie Levin's saying that we have adaptive PE in some of the elementary schools as part of our PE program for students based on their IEPs.
And we have adaptive music as well, correct? Yep.
And adaptive music.
The elementary school? You said not, we're not talking middle school or?
We have it at middle school as well.
Okay, thank you.
So two, two comments. The first is, when we said we didn't take into account special education, I just want to make clear that that comment was we did not analyze special education staffing. So we didn't come in and say, how many resource group teachers did you need or other special education staff? Your question as to whether we included adaptive PE classes, adaptive music classes and other classes? The answer is, I do not know that off the top of my head. And I don't want to guess, so I will get with the team tomorrow and relay that back to the superintendent. The answer to that question, but I don't know specifically. And I don't want to guess.
Other questions?
Okay, Marge, I just respond to that.
Oh, yeah.
I just can come with Marge also. So what we provided to Dr. Levinson's, to New Solutions team included the APE classes and the adaptive classes.
Okay. And we didn't eliminate as much of the FTE as Dr. Levinson suggested to make sure that we had enough capacity for adaptive music and PE. And we spoke into the department chiefs about that.
Okay, thank you.
Sarah. So going back to the middle school staffing, part of what our community values about our middle school, the way that our middle school is set up is the team structure and that there are currently four teams per grade. Do you have a sense through this analysis? Currently, the budget proposes cutting a team. Is there, do you have a sense that we could reduce the number of staff that you're suggesting or that is being suggested in the budget while maintaining that four-team-per-grade structure?
So what we, again, our goal was to help you maintain what you have. What we saw and in conversations with principal and a hard look at the who's teaching what list, you have already what we would call a modified team structure. It is not a pure team structure. There's a couple of teachers that teach multiple grade levels. You have some classes, I believe they're called rainbow classes, where kids are across teams. So what we saw was there was a modified team structure currently that these changes will, you'll continue to have a modified team structure. There may be slightly more of that. It's definitely not a blowing up of the teams in their entirety. And at least from our perspective, and again, ultimately, it's your perspective. You have, you already have a modified team structure. This will continue that, not dramatically change that, but probably increase that slightly.
You just build on increase that slightly, meaning that, what does that mean exactly?
There is depending, again, at this point, the district has not made a decision as to even what grade level this would take place in. And nor has it made a decision about whether some staff would be teaching intervention classes or not. But there is certainly a possibility that you may have, say, one more teacher teaching across the team, or you might have one or two more rainbow classes. Again, from ours, our view, at least viewing the charge as maintain what you're doing. And can you do it? How much staff would you need? We did make the assumption, given your current practice, that having a modified team structure, but mostly a team structure, meant you were continuing with what you're doing. Certainly, as the, now that the district has made a recommendation on the exact number of people, I don't think they've made a decision, at least I didn't see it in the in the presentation, the PowerPoint that I read, exactly which grades or levels. That we couldn't tell you whether there's in fact a little or no increase in that modified team.
Thank you.
Robin, did you have a question?
All right, I think so.
John.
Well, I have a statement. So I went back and watched the October 2022 discussion that this board had when we revised the class size policy. And, you know, one of the questions of the board at the time that Dr. Adley was, should we have a lower end of the range set for classroom guidelines or section guidelines as well? His answer was yes. And behind that answer was because it helps me with enrollment and proper budgeting. We went on to talk about the word below. If you look at the secondary column, the word below is there. And we explored that a little further as a board. And the conclusion of the board and the revision was, yes, you want some flexibility on the low side. But what was specifically cited was not elementary school typical classes or middle school typical classes, but things like AP and very specialized classes that this district takes pride in offering. So I encourage you, if you have questions around our policy, to go look at that discussion. Again, we did it in October 2022, not too far along ago. So then I also, I reflect what Dr. Levinson says. And he said, you know, good practices aligning or marry the guidelines, the class size guidelines with the updated and adjusted enrollment. And I'll say it again, we do it each and every year at the elementary school. We get very little pushback. If we're on the edge, we, you know, we do hear from elementary school parents and maybe some teachers. But this is common practice in this district. And I think what the shock value is in this proposed change is we haven't done that in the middle school over the last several years. And we have slipped below the guidelines. So I think, you know, I take pride in that we follow our policy. And I'll say it again, I think we should follow our policy here. And we have some great insight and some great flexibility. And like we do in the elementary schools, if we find ourselves, you know, slipping higher in terms of class, average class enrollment, we can make adjustments, just like we do each and every year at the elementary schools.
Julie.
Thank you. A couple of things, I did also go back and watch that meeting. I agree that one of the key drivers was making sure that we keep flexibility and recognize that there isn't the magic number that is the right size class. I think kind of even to what Dr. Levinson was saying about his report here is that this is math. And then the job that we have to do is to bring reason and practicality to it and figure out how it works. And I think that that's built into page one, so to speak, of the class size policy, that piece where we have to, we, that's the royal, we, administration, faculty, et cetera, have to assess what the right size classes are, when, where and why. I think one of the trickier things about what we're discussing for the middle school is the way we're talking about applying this change via the elimination of a team. As we've talked about, we haven't identified yet what grade that would be. And that's, I think partly because we don't have a grade that is significantly different in size than any of the other grades. So we're talking about taking one grade and dividing that into three teams instead of four, which is, unless anyone can explain to me how it isn't, it's going to skew the average class sizes for that grade. And I don't know how that makes sense. I also think part of the reason that we already have a modified team structure is because, excuse me, is the same reason that we have a number of classes that fall under the perhaps ideal class size. And that's because you have students who are on a team who, to make up an example, take Mandarin, mid-level math, and they're a band student. And suddenly, when you try to work the magic on that schedule, there are only so many options available. So we either modify the team structure, or you're going to end up with some pretty skewed class sizes. I think that's my simple mind trying to make sense of that. So I don't, I'm not sold at all that eliminating a team is the answer. And my final point on that for the moment is this whole slow enrollment piece. If we're slow to decline and we expect to be slow to grow again, which I think is what we're looking at in the future, how do we adjust year by year? You're not going to add and cut a team year after year. That's just not realistic. So I think we need to be finding something that has a little more flexibility than what is on the table right now.
Alan and Dr. Levinson.
Yeah, so I think the enrollment, looking, looking five years out, it increases by 50 or so, and then it drops down a little bit more. That's not going to change things. The decision about the team has not been made as whether it will be one team or versus another team or will be a variation of sort of what Dr. Levinson is talking about here. So it may well be that we'll end up keeping the teams, but modifying the teams. So those decisions still have to be, in all fairness, still have to be played out with the building principal and administration. And actually, Mr. Levinson.
That's new information, right? Everything in front of us has been eliminating a team?
Well, we have, we have discussed about eliminating the team, but I'll just, the final decision on that has not been made.
So Dr. Levinson, have you looked at schools with team-based structures? And what do you, other than eliminating a team, what are some of the other solutions that you have typically recommended? And what did they?
So here's what we're seeing across the country. And let me, and this is the toughest of all staffing and scheduling questions. As I think one of the board members mentioned, elementary schools do this year in, year out. Lose three kids, add four kids, you add or subtract a section. So this has just been, we've been doing this at elementary schools for probably 100 years. High schools tend to adjust not as much, but pretty often and much more often than middle schools. The 100% pure team model is, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, but it is inflexible in the sense that, you know, you need swings of close to 100 kids at a grade level. You know, if you move from 200 to 300 or. So what we're seeing is that by its very design, not on purpose, but by its design, middle school teams are pretty inflexible. It takes huge shifts in enrollment. As a result, we are seeing vastly more districts moving to what you have already done, which is a modified team. It's a thoughtful process. It is trying to answer the question of how do we get the most and best aspects of the team and the most pure team model with some adjustments around the edges. And more and more districts are getting good at managing a modified team. And the reason they're doing that, and I think this is an important piece. And one of the things, you'll notice the language we use in our report. We often talk about the ability to free up funds. One of the things, and I know there will be many people in this room or on this call who will disagree with the next statement I'm about to get. So I want to acknowledge that not everyone believes this. But every educational researcher, bar none, does agree with it. That's why I'm sharing it. And that is that when you think about managing a constrained budget, a budget that is not endless, how many kids are in a classroom is one factor. And what are all the other services and supports you provide to students is another set of factors. And what we are seeing, the reason we're seeing more and more middle schools go to that modified team structure is they're saying, hey, if we went to this modified team structure, that freed up, let's say in this case, four FTE, if that allowed us to get or to keep social workers, behavior interventionists, interventionists, more technology, that people are wrestling with the fact that very small classes are very expensive and they often crowd out other things. And the research has said, having some of those other things are incredibly impactful. And again, I know class size is all what you're used to. Class sizes in that 17 to 20 range will feel like normal to big-ish if that's what you're used to. I will tell you that I worked with these, a number of districts outside of Minneapolis, St. Paul, who have the exact same demographics you do, have a parent with the same background, love of education and love of children. And they've just never seen a middle school class with fewer than 26 or 28 kids in it. And I'm not suggesting you do that, but I'm suggesting that other places have just have emphasized the other things you're providing kids beyond a small class size. And I think just as you are having this value judgment discussion, which is your job to have that value judgment discussion, I don't think you want to be evaluating, is it better to have 17 kids or 21 kids? Hey, everything being equal, I'm a parent, I would definitely rather 17 than 21. But as a school board member of six years, chair of the board for a few of those, I realize that the real question often becomes, are we going to have 21 kids or 17? But if we have 21, what are the other things we're able to afford to provide? And I just would suggest your discussion be in the totality, not just 17 versus 21. But the trend is finding ways to make the modified middle school model work and work well.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, Nate. Quick question, as we move forward to making those judgments we have to make from a leadership perspective. You've used a few different terms, talking about cutting to the bone or the absolute minimum or some other things. I don't actually know what those phrases mean. Could you give me some guidance? When you go through the budget and I see 12.1, I realize that's the absolute minimum?
Right.
But what does absolute minimum mean? Like when you derive this, I'm just trying to understand your process.
Yeah, so I am saying that we work with some districts. And as a superintendent, it would have made me sweat. But I have worked with districts who run And as a superintendent, it would have made me sweat, but we, I have worked with districts who run this analysis, just like we read it. And when it says you have 12.1 too many FTE to make mathematically accurate analysis, the school board votes a reduction of 12.1 FTE.
And I understand that point. I guess my question was more simple. That 12.1, that's the mathematical minimum just from your calculation?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then we'll make a subjective from there. But just when I look at that number, that's, that's the lowest possible number you could take it to and make the numbers work.
Exactly. And you know, I think, you know, if you're new at this, and then you want to leave yourself 20, 25% buffer.
Okay. So 25%, and that's just for capacity unforeseen or also to prevent bottlenecks moving into specials and other use cases?
To me, you know, for staff always, it, it's like the grease to scheduling, you know, it just makes things a little easier.
Well, I saw your book, it's only 26 bucks. I think that made me money.
And it's a great book.
Yeah. I can't spend that kind of money.
I bet you they got it used for half that.
Um, two other questions, just we have you here. You've had a lot of experience in different districts. One is, we have here the six-day schedule that we use versus a five-day. Do you see that in a lot of places? Does that more efficient, less efficient? Just looking to pick your brain since we have you for a moment.
Um, so the, the, the first and biggest finding is the six, five, eight, 42 day, like those rotations aren't that important when it comes to student outcomes. Uh, what matters for student outcomes is like, how many minutes are you teaching me math and giving me art over the course of a year? So if you were to break it up, you know, so the, the frequency of these things happening, four-day, five-day, six-day schedule, not really um, a big impact on kids. Um, so you, we, we generally would say that, you know, the five seems the easiest to, to manage conceptually. But that, but only if you're, let's say at the elementary, if you're specials, if you've got five specials or it's two art, two music, and a PE. If you've got five of them, run a five-day cycle. But I, I would say the biggest issue is it's not that important. Um, you can staff efficiently and effectively and schedule efficiently and effectively in any of those rotations. It just might take a slightly more skilled scheduler. And it's definitely more coordination between schools once you seem to get off that five-day cycle. And that's just because people's brains seem wired to that.
Okay. Thank you for that guidance. And I guess the last question would be, you were talking, I believe the term used is interventionist, if we have a teacher resource for you. Can you talk about trend lines, what you're seeing? Because I know it's come up a few times here post-COVID, what we're looking to do for those kids who are not in the middle school yet, but will be in a couple of years. Are you seeing that as a trend in elementary? Are you seeing that in middle? Like, what are you seeing as you look out there? And is this becoming more prevalent post-COVID?
Yeah. So, um, before COVID, let's start there. Even in very high-performing uh, districts with reasonably well-off families, um, some percentage of kids struggle to learn to read, some percentage of kids struggle with math. It doesn't matter how well off the community is, there are always some kids who struggle. The research said before the pandemic, those kids need all of core instruction plus extra time to learn the things they haven't yet learned. And that extra time should come from somebody who knows the content incredibly well, generally a reading teacher or math teacher, an English teacher. That was, I would say, before the pandemic came, we, we saw about 80% of elementary schools have intervention time from strong intervention teachers. And we saw only maybe five or 10% of middle and high schools doing that. Then the pandemic came. And then we got back into class and teachers said, whoa, we have more kids than ever who fell behind. Um, and so we are seeing probably the single biggest trend across America today is elementary, middle, and high school intervention. Um, and I will say, if I give a hundred speeches a year, about 75 of them are on best practices and intervention. Uh, because we just have more kids than ever before who fell behind. And we owe it to them to help catch them up. And we've got kids at high school where that's true, kids in middle school. Um, it's just interesting. I heard, um, or earlier, I, you know, the discussion of the, that, I think it was the association president talking about that increase in the number of kids identified for special needs. Uh, having grown in the district, you're up to about 20%. Um, we've seen nationwide, more kids have been identified with having a disability today than I believe at any time since they have been recording students with special needs. Many of us who work in special education would say the pandemic probably didn't create a lot of disabilities, but it definitely created a lack of learning loss. And in some cases, what we're seeing is increases in kids going into special ed as an avenue to get extra help. And they clearly need extra help, but not all of them probably have a disability. And so again, one of those big nationwide trends um, is an increase in general education intervention, so that special ed is not the only path to getting extra help.
Hey, thank you so much for sharing your experience. I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Robin?
Um, just one question, kind of on the special ed topic regarding the middle school. Um, I think some of the public comment brought this up as well. So currently the middle school has 207 students with IEPs. And we have been seeing increased identification. My question, since this analysis did not include um, special ed, and I understand what class size policies do anticipate special ed students are in those classes, how do you consider that that would impact teacher time during the day if we do have continued increased identification in the middle school in terms of their ability to schedule the meetings that they have to attend or be able to support special ed students, 504 students, and then the interventionists, as you mentioned?
Yeah, um, great point. So I, again, a big topic, let me answer a couple of parts of it. So I think the most valuable thing you could do for your middle school students who are struggling academically with or without an IEP would be to um, expand general education intervention. And to do that with um, general education teachers or special educators who are very strong in the content. And you'll notice one of, there was that recommendation, or at least that, excuse me, we didn't make any recommendations, that, that, the fact that, that you actually have a, a number of teachers who contractually could teach a, a fifth period, uh, but you don't need them to teach a fifth period. So I would definitely suggest you think about how to tap into their expertise and that capacity um, to offer some of that intervention. So I think that more than anything is going to make a world of difference. I, I think the other point of like, quote, all the other things that teachers have to do, and there's a lot of them. And I definitely do not want to minimize all the meetings and other things teachers do. All I will say is that um, compared to most districts in the country, your class sizes will still be on the small side. So their colleagues across the country are already doing that. Then it doesn't mean that it's easy, but it's totally typical.
Katie?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the question that I heard Robin asking was that the special education component um, of our, the schedule of this report is not considered though, right? Like, I understand what you were saying, but this, the makeup of our classrooms, whatever percentages they are of students is not considered in this report.
No, 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 definitely. No, no, but the students were considered. So we, when we did this analysis and looked at your data, um, we are, we knew how many kids have IEPs um, in, in each of the schools and that they were considered. The, the one thing we wanted to clarify is that we did not analyze how many special education teachers you need. Because, and I often, when we do this kind of work, the first question I get from school board members is, do we have too many special education teachers? Do we have too many special education power professions?
Right. I, thank you. Yeah, I understand your point. Thank you. I just meant that without an actual schedule, it's not possible to consider the makeup of class by class. Um, but with that, I know you've been here for quite a while. Thank you for your time. Jill, I did just have a couple of follow-ups for board discussion if, if we're ready to end questions to Mr. Levinson.
A few more people have, okay, thanks, Greg.
Yeah. Hopefully this will just be three quick questions. Um, one is related to just the scope of the work that was done here. Is this, is this typical in terms of what you do, um, in terms of just being, you know, predominantly seemingly data-driven versus a bit more qualitative, like looking at, at the actual classroom, seeing what the teacher schedules are, seeing how busy teachers are and, and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah. I mean, we, we have about half the times we're asked to bring in an analytical perspective. And the other half of the time we're asked to do that plus more. So both are very common.
Okay. And then the, uh, one follow-up to John's point earlier, just in terms of the underlying data for this, and this is more a question for the, for the broader group, like how, how, there's been a lot of questions around the underlying data and I don't know if, I wouldn't call it inconsistencies, but just nuances with the data as relates to, some is 23, some is 24, what's included, what's not included. How can we be sure that the underlying data that was provided here is an apples-to-apples comparison versus the parameters that the board has set that we're using to judge that data?
You referred to me, so I can't follow you. I can't follow your question.
Was that a question for Dr. Levinson or for, or for the board?
Or could you expand on your question? Cause I don't even understand it.
So there was underlying data provided, provided to Nate. Are we sure that that data, like, it sounds like some of it's 2023, 2024, some of it includes certain teachers that may be specialized versus not. How do we know that when we determine the parameters that we're comparing that data versus, how do we know that it's apples to apples?
So it was, it, there was information that came from this slam report and it's direct information from the actual classrooms themselves that we have in Aspen and verified by the principals.
So it's the slam enrollment report, the in class, that, that one we get from Aspen that tells us how many classes and how many kids are in each one. And it sounds like you provided some information, Shirley, or was that also from Aspen?
Aspen also identifies which students have IEPs in 504 plans.
So the number of students with IEP in 504 plans and then, but like APE, for example, would show up in Aspen because that's a, that's a child's schedule?
It will also show up on teacher's schedules in APE class.
Okay. All right. Was there anything else that we provided?
Well, we have the, the, we had the, from the principals themselves, the verification of it and also some qualitative feedback from them.
Okay. How many years of data? Was it one year of data? And the enrollment report is different, but how many, was it one year of Aspen data?
So we pulled all the data out of Aspen, so the student information system. So they got rosters of uh, every teacher's class, when the schedules met, whether it was quarterly, whether it was semester-driven, um, what day of the week they had it. Um, the reason why we looked at projected for elementary is because it's a much clearer class size. So if we look at next year, like you're losing a class at Hindley, you're gaining a class at Holmes. It's not quite the same. Um, because you, you're not going to say, okay, well, if I'm a middle school student, I'm taking Mandarin as opposed to French or vice versa. So to have better data, it would be pulling that, uh, that actual information down to the individual classroom, to the individual teacher, to the individual day that the student's taking class.
Um, one way, if I could weigh in on this, one way to think about this, you know, again, I spent six years on a school board and I've worked with many, many, many others, the level of detail, precision, and data cleaning that you now have in front of you, uh, it is better than 95% of all other school boards when they're having to make this kind of decision. So again, nobody ever goes to the last decimal place. But, but the data you have, with the one exception, which I did say, I do believe we should, we or you should take a look at breaking out that music and actually break it into three or four categories, regular classroom music versus chorus or band. Um, but the level of detail, precision, and the amount of time that has gone into cleaning this data is more than the vast majority of school systems and school boards would have when making these kind of decisions. So I won't say it is perfect, but I'll say it's way better than almost any other school board would have at this moment.
You're making our administration blush right now.
Greg, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that it was apples to apples. And my, my last quick thing is, are there, are there examples of other districts where you've done this sort of analysis and work? They've then gone and implemented your suggestions or something within the range of your suggestions? And then there's a post-mortem. What were the implications? What, what were the consequences, pluses and minuses?
Uh, yes. So thi- this is a practice that has been more, more and more widely adopted, not just from our clients. Obviously, our clients do it. Uh, I've written a lot of books, a lot of, if you look at how chief financial officers are trained in many states, they're being trained on this methodology. Um, colleges that, or graduate schools use this methodology. So this is definitely the trend. And, and what you find is that once you start this, uh, you never give it up. That, that it, it is a more analytical. Um, again, I, I totally hear and feel and empathize for some of the speakers today. You know, it doesn't, it feels terrible if somebody says, hey, you know, we're, we're going to have one less music teacher. And you know, it, doesn't it just raise the question, why do you guys hate music? Do you think we're not important? And I know nobody in this room, and I know the superintendent doesn't hate music, and I'm just using music as an example. But it can feel very personal. But if you move to a system that is very mathematical, you're saying, hey, we want to provide all these things for our kids. We have set rules for how big the classes should be, and we have set rules for how much work a teacher can reasonably expected to do. Well, why don't you just use those rules in an analytical, consistent, transparent way? So that people know that any decisions you're making, they're not personal, they're not because you like one department more than the other. You're just trying to match staffing to the things you want to do. Um, and it does depersonalize it. It does give you more precision. And it does free up money to do some of the other things that your kids also need. So um, our experience is that once districts move to this and once principals have seen it, um, people accelerate their use of it and get more sophisticated in both how you plan and how you schedule because it just makes sense and it actually removes a lot of the emotion from what is clearly and always an emotional discussion.
Robin? I, just one question, just on the foreign languages. And this kind of gets back to the middle school being, the analysis was on the current enrollment in classes and teaching. The foreign languages, specifically page 15, it just shows sixth grade French, seventh grade Mandarin, but not sixth grade. And, and next year we will have eighth grade Mandarin. So I just want to make sure that whatever recommendations we are making, that we anticipate the necessary foreign language teaching required. That's just one question.
Um, one last question for me, Dr. Levinson. Um, we, you talked earlier about our district being a suburb, small suburban district, fairly slow growing. But it is still true that one of the concerns we have is that in a period of teacher shortages, that it is difficult to let folks go with the concern that we may not be able to get a teacher back, particularly in shortage areas. Can you speak to that concern?
Yeah, no, it certainly, um, teachers are incredibly valuable and it is never easy or desirable to, to let somebody go. Um, this is the hard trade-offs, but I, I, I do know, and this is just more my former school board hat. Um, there are just so many things I wanted to do, and certainly superintendent hat, but there are so many things I wanted to provide to the students in our district. And whether it was, you know, coaching for teachers or intervention for students or mental health or behavioral supports. And you always run up against the, you know, we've hit our limit for how much we can afford. Um, there are certainly, again, it's a value judgment, but the, the fact is that this analysis says you are not taking away a single course, a single offering. What the students will see next year is exactly what they saw this year. And if that gives you some latitude to do some other things, you know, as a school board member, I supported that. I'm not saying every, I'm not saying that's the only right thing or the only right way to think about it. Um, and I think the question you, you raise is, um, very valid. But it is, from a student's perspective, nothing is lost. Some dollars are freed up to do other things. And as a board, you have to decide whether that's a good trade-off or not. But it's always about trade-offs.
Thank you.
You're just lucky. Uh, my last thought, and then I will let you go. You are lucky. You are lucky in the sense that as you are trying to build this budget and balance a budget and add some things, I saw special ed was growing. That at least all the options that are on the table are what I'll call invisible to students. Meaning nothing is going away that they currently have. I will tell you that half my clients, we are having way different and very less pleasant conversations about whether we're going to drop an AP course, not offer certain electives. People are actually taking stuff away from kids, which is a terrible discussion to be part of. I'm very glad we're not having that, but I just want to remind folks that this does not take anything away from kids. And you just need to decide how best to use the dollars that you do have to provide all the things you want to provide to your kids.
Thank you very much.
You're very, very welcome.
Okay, all right.
Thank you Nate, your time is much appreciated this evening. Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome. Have a good night, everybody.
You too, Nate.
Thank you. Katie, do you have some questions before we move on?
Middle school is not the same as elementary school. As we're taking in this long presentation. Everything is more complicated when students have individual schedules. And I feel the need to reiterate again that the students are not widgets. And that math is only going to take us so far and is not going to solve all of our scheduling challenges. Additionally, I feel the need to express my frustration at receiving what I view as an incomplete report for the first time with budget implications. I find this incredible that we are having this discussion right now when there are jobs being cut and there is potentially an entire team model being eroded as we speak, when we are supposed to be in budget discussions. And I think that this is very, very frustrating. With that, I'm sorry.
I guess the question is, how would you like it handled if we're looking at enrollment matching our policy versus enrollment?
I would have liked it when we had the SLAM presentation that had enrollment. I would have liked it then. Additionally, I'm concerned about spending more money to get an actual schedule. None of this works until you see an actual schedule, but that cost, we don't even know how much, double or more. And I don't see the value in this report personally.
Just, Miss Levin, just for, I didn't have the information to, at that time to actually give it.
I mean, isn't our role to look at the data of enrollment and match it to our policy?
It is, John, but you've been saying for years and years that we shouldn't be having policy discussions in the middle of a budget season. And that feels like exactly what we're doing right now.
No, this falls within the policy.
Okay. I think, yeah.
I do just want to say, one thing I am still trying to wrap my head around is how we do confirm that the capacity that's being recommended in this report, so to speak, is logistically doable. I don't understand that presently, and I need to understand that to get behind this proposal.
I will echo that. Like I don't know that I, I would go so far to say what Katie was saying, that this is not valuable. I do think it's valuable from an analytical point of view, but to the humanistic side, to take this data and say, okay, yes, I agree, we can lose these six positions. But what does that look like? I just want to make sure that our students will, their experience will not change, like Dr. Levinson said. And until I know that there's a schedule that works with the team model intact, I don't know how I can support this yet.
Well, I see you, but do you have some thoughts on a further process? What were your thoughts on next steps, this and then?
So I understand people's anxiety and I understand why you would say that, right? Having been a principal, having been in education for a long time, I can tell you that with the margin of error that we have built in here, we can do this. And actually Nate just is actually up, I didn't know this before, but he's now up in New Canaan also. You've had a lot of districts around us, Wilton, Westport, Milford, Fairfield have also not used him, but have also been using consultants to look at their actual scheduling. I'm confident, and this is why I, I'm suggesting that we keep him on. We worked with the principals, side by side with the principals, onsite, offsite, whatever it takes to actually complete that particular task. And I'm very confident, I wasn't confident to take out the 12th, I wasn't confident to take near that actually. But I am confident that we can deliver on that. You won't be able to complete the schedule before the budget is actually completed. And I understand that's frustrating, but schedules aren't completed before budgets are completed anyway. But for another level of reassurance for the board, for the community members who are here, for my teachers who are here, for our students and our teachers and our administration. I think it is important to keep him alongside the site to make sure the implementation is actually completed. And I have confidence that it will be completed. I mean, I'm going to be responsible for, that's okay, people say, well, it doesn't matter if you're responsible or not, but it's also on the ground as teachers. Clearly, I would not recommend something if I didn't think that we, didn't believe we could pull it off. And with this level of conservative approach, I absolutely do believe that we can. But I, I'm also thinking that it's important for Mr. Levinson in this case to work very closely with our teachers and our staff to actually help them actually do that.
When, when do you think we will know whether the, the team, the four teams in each of the three grades, if that could remain intact? Is that something that we will know before we vote on this?
Yes, I think we could, that part of it, I think we could do, yes, that part, that decision.
To me, that's the most important part of this decision to me.
Yes, Steve.
Hi. So I appreciate the analysis that was done and I understand the nature of the exercise. What can we cut down, which is why I was asking for the definition of what the absolute minimum is, it's just a mathematical exercise. And I get the point that, you know, we can follow this number, we can go to 12.1 and we'll take nothing away from the students. The problem, Katie's point, I think for me, John, is that I appreciate we're doing the budget process right now. But if this had come to us months ago, like I was just sitting here listening to Nate, and my idea is like, great, we're going to do some intervention because this makes sense with COVID. We're going to get some department chairs, curriculum chairs, we're going to get them to do some of the intervention too. And we're going to use some of our teachers and that's not going to cost us anything from teacher time. Like that would be a great thing, instead of cutting to the minimum where we don't take away from students. We now have an opportunity here, we've identified a gap, where we can actually provide more to them without additional costs. Like I'd rather be having that discussion. It's frustrating now that we're locked into the budget, but we also have policy and other things we could do. So I do also feel some frustration. And, you know, hopefully we can shake that out as we go through this process, but I would rather be giving more to our students at no cost as opposed to taking away.
Just, just like, I just need to reiterate again, we're not taking away and we're actually giving more to our students through the efficiencies and scheduling. But I'm sure that will come out.
Jill, can we wrap up what the follow ups are coming out of this conversation?
Sure, yes, yes, absolutely. Okay. So Alan, would you wrap up the follow ups, your intended follow ups?
So my tentative follow up one would be to how quickly we can make a decision. But I don't want to make a decision just so quickly that, how can we make a decision on the team versus a modified, versus reducing the team. So that would be one of, I have to resolve in all transparency to you the cost for Mr. Levinson to come back and work side by side with our, our principals, our administrators want that. And I, I think my community would probably want someone to work alongside them to actually complete that. So that's, that's the next step in that. That, that would be the next step, for the most part, just the request that the board has made or is making in terms of the decision.
Elementary music also to take another look at that.
I do think that is one of the most complicated ones. Again, I'm confident in it, but it is one of the most complicated ones. So the, so the music, the team decision.
I think all music.
All music, I think that makes sense. And I'd like to add one more ask, if it's doable, I would like to have a better understanding of how the middle school teachers' time is spent presently. I don't know how many are spending time in intervention. I don't know how many time, how many are spending time in PPTs and how much time that adds up to. I'm not sure, I think middle school teachers are supposed to have team meetings every day. I want to have a full appreciation of as staffed, what their days look like. And so we can assess what we're looking at changing in that.
If you don't mind, can I just use as an opportunity, I know some of our middle school teacher staff are here. I may inadvertently have conveyed a wrong message the other day when I was speaking. I spoke about the elementary school in terms of, but I used the phrase on a treadmill, well, I do believe there are a treadmill of elementary teachers. But in no way was I suggesting that I don't value our middle school teachers or that they don't work as hard as anyone else. Middle school is a very unique place, everybody knows that for children. And it's also very unique for staff who work extremely hard and conscientiously and diligently. So if there was any potential message that was misunderstood or otherwise, where I didn't convey it properly. I started off the conversation with saying that our staff rages with confidence, right? And competencies, and I firmly believe that. So it's just, I also believe though, it's inequity in terms of how many classes people teach. And I think that there is a furnace about that, that, that was the only point I was making.
Well, I think that is a good segue to SRBI, where we'll be talking at the end about middle school teachers and SRBI.
Just as, just as people transition a little bit, I'll just mention, this is one of the areas right here where through efficiencies, I believe not only just the number of students who maybe need to be in SRBI, but we'll be able to provide, I believe, services for many other students, a general level of support. And I think that's a good thing. But with that, I'll let my colleagues make their presentation.
Michelle, for queuing that up. Good evening, members of the board and everyone who's joining us tonight in person and online. I'm pleased to share an update with the board of education tonight alongside my colleague Julie Stroller on SRBI. And I think the last time through our archaeological date that there was a presentation of the board on SRBI might have been in around, around 2017. So it's been some time. So we've got a lot to share. And I also want to note that we do have some middle school staff in the audience who happen to be, and I believe online, Christine Dupuy is online and Dan Kenzick is here, who are firsthand experts in the work of SRBI at the middle school. So thank you both for, for being here in person and virtually tonight. And thank you, Mrs. Stroller, for sharing perspective about the elementary experience of SRBI. So tonight we want to share with the board an update on the support, systems and structures related to SRBI, which is a framework. We do want to give a little bit of a background or primer on what SRBI is, so we can come to an understanding of its intent and purpose in our schools. And I'm particularly reflective now of Nate's comments about the pandemic. And pandemic not increasing necessarily the number of variability of disabilities. And I'm sure Shirley and I will have a lot to talk about with regards to those comments after this meeting and tomorrow. But the idea of the learning loss and the avenue of extra help, right, on the route towards special education. And I know from my short time in the district that there is a commitment to providing the highest quality of services for our students that meet their needs wherever they are on the continuum of learning. But also there's a great desire to have all students achieving at a level of excellence and all students achieving independence. So this presentation tonight with regard to SRBI, I think is a prime example of where the continuum of general education services all the way through our students who receive special education services really comes together in partnership. And some of the supports that we might talk about tonight and beyond, especially with regard to the budget, include things like resources, professional learning, staffing. The systems that are included with this kind of framework are the level of interventions that students receive at various tiers. We'll talk about that a little bit tonight. And also the structures, that has to do with really, for example, the core curriculum that we develop and how often data teams meet, how we develop assessment calendars and so forth. So tonight we'll talk a little bit again about what SRBI is, what SRBI looks like in Darien Public Schools, which has been some significant learning for me in the last several months. What the process is for SRBI, how we staff SRBI, there's been a little bit of a spoiler alert to that through the budget conversation. Some information about caseloads and outcomes, some data that the board has requested. And then some information about our initial intended next steps. So SRBI moved a little bit, is a framework again for providing high quality system of education for all learners. So SRBI in a sense really speaks to the core instruction that we expect to happen in every single classroom, ELP through grade 12 plus for all of our learners. And part of that again is related to the kind of curriculum that we write. How we talk about shifts in instructional practices to address curriculum that's written. How we measure student learning through assessments and the effectiveness of the curriculum that we write. And how we provide professional learning, all that goes into developing a really strong core. The instruction and interventions in the general ed setting are really supported through the SRBI process whenever there is a student who is demonstrating concern, primarily in the area of literacy, numeracy or behavior. And concern may not be the right word to use there, but any student that's demonstrating maybe a challenge in learning or a challenge of behavior in meeting core grade level expectations. And there are courses, data-driven decision-making, which is a key piece of the SRBI process. I won't go through all of these details as far as background and legislation. But it is important to note that SRBI is absolutely legislated. It's related to legislation that I know this board has heard of before, like No Child Left Behind, the reauthorization of that with ESA, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act. Individuals with Disabilities Act, IDEA, which has been reauthorized several times. And this, I think, really speaks to Nate's comment of the intent with SRBI, not necessarily being an avenue to special education, but really wanting to make sure that we're meeting children's needs to the greatest extent possible in that least restrictive environment. So that we're moving toward independence. And we're providing interventions that are targeted to a student's needs, right? Because we don't want to ever over prescribe, we want to make sure kids get exactly what they need. Key components of SRBI, I've spoken already a little bit about this, the strengthening of a core curriculum. We want to ensure that SRBI, we're really thinking about what are those research-based evidence practices and the effect size of those practices that we should really be having in place? How we differentiate instruction, thinking about things beyond just standards, but also the climate that we have in all of our classrooms? And how we progress monitor. So Julie's going to talk a little bit further in the presentation about the framework for assessments. And you'll hear the term progress monitoring, which talks about how we measure student learning through the course of units, through the course of a school year against standards. We'll talk a little bit again about the tiered system of supports. Here are some guiding principles of SRBI, which really again are, I would say, how the process of SRBI takes shape in schools. And so they're really things that are guiding principles or beliefs in this type of framework. It's again, having a very strong core, anchoring all of our work to research and best practice. Having a belief in the ability of all children to excel at high levels. It's about students and our staff, teachers and administrators included, believing in continuous improvement. Not only on the part of the student, but also on the part of all of us as educators and what we provide for our students. And then also fundamentally ensuring that students who ultimately might require special education supports because of learning differences are appropriately supported through that identification process and planned for. So at this point, I'm going to turn things over to Mrs. Stroller, who will bring us through kind of what SRBI is looking like currently in Darien Public Schools.
And good evening, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity. Of course, our mission and vision and core values undergird everything that we do, including SRBI, which at its core is about high quality teaching that inspires a love of learning and prepares all students to thrive. So SRBI supports the excellent work in our schools by providing a framework for instruction. Again, Dr. Fedigan talked about a core curriculum, rigorous, aligned to standards, research and evidence-based instructional practices, differentiated instruction that meets the needs of all learners and a battery of assessments, which we'll talk a little bit more about, formative, summative and universal assessments to monitor student achievement and inform instruction. So you saw the key components of SRBI. All of those are present in our model, but additional features, we have clear entry and exit criteria. And we use multiple data points to determine what kind of support students need. We have frequent progress monitoring, which I will also speak about. We have comprehensive building and district teams with administrators, classroom teachers, specialists and specialists. and special education teams to look at student data and talk about the interventions and instruction. And then we have strong family engagement, frequent communication through phone calls, through emails, through conferences. This is a model that, or a graphic that is from the state about the SRBI process. And when they talk about SRBI, they're talking about general education students. So they're talking about generally about 80% of our students are in tier one, which means that they benefit from just the regular core curriculum. There's about 15% that need more. They are in tier two and about 5% in tier three. We're going to show you that same triangle, but we also think about all of our, we think about tier one as all students, including our students with special needs and our students in SRBI. So our assessment framework, which I talked about when I talked about our standardized testing report, and I'll share again. Universal screening means it's administered universally, three times a year to all students in grades K through eight in literacy and math and behavior. So we now use the DESA for our behavior screener. In literacy and math, we use EAMS Web Plus. We have increased our battery of assessments this year in compliance with the state. So we do look at that data. We also have formative assessments, which is assessments as part of learning. And those are, we look at all components of reading of mathematics. We monitor student progress and we use that really to make adjustments in the moment. So things like in our earliest, our youngest learners phonics decoding, we look at phonemic awareness. We look at students' response to questioning, written response. And then there's our curriculum-based assessments. Those are tests, performance tasks, on-demand writing assessments, things that we look at to check in on mastery of content taught. That's our framework for all students. Tier one instruction is what our core instruction looks like for all students. It's a robust and rigorous curriculum. As I said, it's aligned to the standards, scientifically and evidence-based instructional practices. It's differentiated. So at our core, students are getting small group differentiated instruction, all students, because we believe that all students have an opportunity to grow and thrive. We make decisions based on data and we know that some students require more closely monitored intensive support from their classroom teacher. So we think about that as like tier one plus. Tier two students require additional support beyond what the classroom teacher provides in literacy, mathematics and/or behavior. They receive targeted intervention by a specialist using a scientifically research-based program with fidelity. The groups are small. They don't exceed six students. They meet three to four times per week in the middle school or per six-day cycle at the elementary school for about 30 minutes per session. There's frequent progress monitoring and the teams meet every six to eight weeks to review student performance. They determine next steps. It might be a change in intervention. It might be a change in the instruction, or it might be a change to the tier, meaning they might require more frequent or intensive instruction, which would mean that they would move to tier three. They may also be doing really well and move back to tier one. Tier three is additional support beyond tier two in that area of need, still by the same interventionist. Groups meet more frequently, five to six times a week or a six-day cycle. There's increase in the intensity of support, so the groups don't exceed three students. More frequent progress monitoring because there's more instruction. And again, those team meetings every six to eight weeks to review student performance. Teams may determine, again, it may be a change in instruction. The student may be making some progress, but perhaps not as much progress as we would like to see. So we might change the instruction. Or we might determine that the student is doing very well, but we still want to keep our eye on them, so we move them to tier two. Or the team might make a referral for special education when they determine that that's appropriate. We have very, as I said, very specific criteria for entrance and exit into SRBI. I don't know if you want a closer look at them, but they are linked. And I believe online you can, that those links are all active. This is just a picture of what this looks like. So all of the data points that we look at when we talk about students in literacy and math at both the elementary and the middle school level. We are in the process now of developing criteria for SRBI behavior and I'll talk more about that. This is a model that we started developing actually pre-COVID. And we are in the process right now of reviewing this. And now that we have Dr. Dad, our Director of Mental Health, she's overseeing leadership of this in collaboration with our team and the school psychologists. This is the model that's used at the elementary school only. But tier one is generally the classroom teacher consults with the school psychologist who provides interventions that can be used in the classroom. Tier two is direct work with the school psychologist. And again, that tier three is more intensive, more frequent intervention with the school psychologist. So this is a flow chart that really shows our process. So in the purple, that's tier one. And then that next pinkish layer is that tier one plus. So we know that by their classroom teacher, this is everything that I just explained. But this is really what it looks like. And this is the flow of how children move back and forth from one tier to the other. They may stay in a tier beyond that six to eight weeks because they're making progress and we just feel like they need more time and support. So this is our elementary staffing. Each elementary school has 1.5 literacy and one full-time math specialist. They not only provide support to our students through SRBI, they also provide instruction to our multilingual learners. And that's a little bit different in terms of progress monitoring, because our multilingual learners have a variety of needs. When they're newcomers and don't speak any English, obviously, we provide more support. But even so, that six to eight week timeline, it's really extended for the whole school year because we know that they need ongoing support for multiple years. Our interventionists are members of that building-based leadership and data team. They plan and facilitate professional learning, which they're doing right now. They push into classrooms, they model lessons, they pull small groups alongside teachers, particularly in our primary grades. They work with teachers to develop tier one goals. They support new teachers. They support special educators with goal-setting and instructional pedagogies, and they collaborate with families. At the secondary level, Middlesex has one full-time literacy and one full-time math specialist. And Darien High School has one full-time literacy specialist. They provide, again, SRBI to students in need of support as well as supporting our multilingual learners. At the high school, the focus is very much on executive functioning and study skills. They also participate in building-based intervention meetings and they collaborate with teachers and with families. And we wanted to provide some data, but I will say, this is very, very much a moving target. Students go in and out. This is the end of the year from last year. You'll see the total caseloads and then the students in tier two, tier three. Those total caseloads reflect the SRBI caseload plus the multilingual learners. You'll see the number of students at the end of the year remaining in SRBI, the number that exited and the number that qualified for special education support in literacy and math by grade. The reason that you don't see as many students exiting in all places, particularly in kindergarten, those students, because we know that they developmentally, when they come to school, they come at such different places. We generally like give them time to learn in the classroom. So they may not have entered SRBI until later in the year. And they may have come in at tier two, they may have moved to tier three, they may be back in tier two, but they're still in SRBI. So they're still reflected in our caseload. There may be students who just moved into SRBI in the spring and they would remain on our caseload at the end of the year. So we look at this at various points through the year, but this is just the total caseloads and outcomes for 2022, 23 at K5. And here's that same information for the middle school. So as I mentioned before, we have a little bit of a different graphic. We think about tier one as all of our students. All of our students are receiving instruction in their gen ed classroom from their teacher. So this is for, this is as of October 1st of this year. Again, pull this from one moment in time. This is for K through eight. So we have 3,158 students in tier one. We had about 212 students at that point in time that were like in tier one plus, receiving extra support from the teacher. We had 102 students in tier two, 33 students in tier three and 577 students with IAPs. So now I'm going to pass this back to Dr. Fedigan to talk about our next steps.
Okay, thank you, Julie. So part of our work is not just thinking about what is, but what could be. So we wanted to share with the board some of our ideas for next steps with SRBI and improving system structures, resources and supports in the school system. So one of the things that we want to do is take a look at expanding our definition of SRBI. And so the state, not only the state of Connecticut, but several states actually use instead of, it used to be RTI, Response to Intervention, now SRBI, several states use, and you'll see the language here, multi-tiered system of support. And so that's the idea of really looking at the development of the whole child. So not just the academic and the literacy piece, not just the behavioral piece, but really all developmental domains of a child and ensuring that there's a very strong framework to provide responsive intervention in all of those areas. So some things that we want to do, really approach more of an MTSS model. We, Julie and I, especially at the elementary level, have been in close conversation with Shirley Klein, Kristen and Laura about the need for speech intervention as a part of SRBI. We know how important those early literacy skills are connected to the development of speech for our youngest learners. We need to be thinking about those interventions that are applied for students with regard to SRBI. B, that's the behavioral piece. And I would say, not only with Dr. Levinson's comments about learning loss, but especially our children that have missed some of those more typical opportunities to socialize in school in their early years, who are now moving up through the grades. It's certainly something that not only here in our community do we need to be taking a look at, but that's also, I would say, a state and national trend. This last bullet, I want to just clarify, is not just only speaking about responsive classroom as in a formal resource that's used in many different school districts. That is getting at the idea that we are not just thinking about managing children's behaviors in the vein of wanting children to grow, to be independent, make their own good choices, regulate their behaviors. This is about developing that kind of school climate and classroom climate that is responsive to children. So lowercase, Shirley and I have been talking a lot about this, lowercase responsive classroom. We believe it's a much better, fundamentally, it's a much better approach. Next steps, we also want to always be looking at the battery of assessments. Because that text was small on that slide that had the clear links to exit criteria, entrance and exit criteria, I would encourage board members and anyone in the public who's accessing this to look at those links, because those links include a large number of assessments that we can use universally or as needed with students to take a look at their progress in different areas. One of the things that we're doing is also looking at literacy achievement, not only holistically, but by subgroup. Spoiler alert again, one of our comments with the curriculum committee meeting on Thursday will be around looking in particular around the area of literacy and how all kids are responding to programming and those students that are in different subgroups. We are also going to be obviously continuing to take a look at instructional practices and how those are meeting the needs as we make curriculum shifts of our learners and what shifts need to be made in those areas. Something that I know Shirley and I are most excited about, I think, is the collaboration again. It should not be that SRBI is a framework and there's a clear delineation of just gen ed and SESS. There needs to be an information, needs to be a two-way, what's happening in the general curriculum toward SESS and vice versa to inform the work for all learners. Again, because all learners are recognized as learners in that tier one, in that tier one part of that triangle. And we can learn from not only what happens in the general education setting, but from what students are experiencing when they move on for further services to inform and improve our practice. We want to also be thinking about a more structured approach with SRBI at the secondary level. And I know that Dan and Christine have worked and really developed, I think, different systems and structures, even most recently in this last year or so, to strengthen what's happening at the secondary level. And I know there's an interest for our team in Darien to be thinking about this as a continuum, ELP through grade 12. And we also need to be considering especially how we're supporting our multilingual learners as that is a growing population in our system. We've also been talking at length about our FY25 budget. And I think Dr. Levinson's comments also talked about a trend nationally to support students in the general education with really strong personalized interventions. So that is something that we want to be looking at next. And part of the recommended budget would allow for us to increase those supports with current staffing at the middle school level. And so at this point, that is what we have prepared to share with the board of education tonight. And we are happy, any one of us, including our middle school colleagues, thank you again for being here to respond to questions from the board.
With that, I'll take board questions. Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Fedigan and Mrs. Stroller for this. This is a really thorough presentation. I'm not sure that we've seen this in the past few years, so thank you for that. I'm curious about the parent piece and the parent buy-in and the, you know, you have a student, you get a call from the teacher, hey, we want to go to tier two, or you know, we think your child needs a little bit more. What does that conversation look like? Does the parent need to say, yep, okay, you can work with my child? Or how does that process work?
Yes, there is that conversation. Generally, I will say, our interventionists are exceptional and our parents know them. The team has, they're veteran educators. I don't know of any parent that has refused SRBI services. They know that their children are getting what they need. We also, when we talked about structures, one thing we didn't mention was that we have what we call a DI block, differentiated instruction block. So when students are pulled from services, they're not pulled, they're not missing any core instruction. So parents know that as well. And that's not just for SRBI. That's for, you know, sometimes we can't provide all services to children who are receiving more support, but generally, that's when they're getting their services. So parents are very supportive. We do have parents that hear when their child is struggling, that they immediately want to refer to PPT.
Another thing that I would just add is with an interventionist that's working to support a student, it's another caring member of that child's team. And that's done in concert with the general education classroom teacher. So the student and the parent likely by the time there is a referral for intervention have established a relationship. And the interventionist has obviously a strong collegial relationship with the general classroom teacher. I can see Dan nodding. So it's not the passing off of the student. It's like widening the net of support for the student. And I think that really does help a lot. Julie's comments about sometimes, you know, we can certainly all understand as parents, when it seems as if there's a support needed, we want to be able to fix that right away, right? And we also know that it's important for children to have productive struggle and learning. So one of the tricks here is to figure out what's the productive struggle and learning and what are the necessary applied interventions without overschackling, without providing too many of those additional supports. And also, it's hard to sometimes be patient in a process, but it's really important to stick with fidelity to these cycles of SRBI because we don't want to inadvertently provide supports that aren't necessary, because that also has unintended consequences.
Julie, who is, or Amy, who's administering SRBI behavioral?
The school psychologist, working concert with the classroom teacher to look at student need and response for intervention. So it depends on the level of student need.
Thank you. Greg.
How are you all measuring or evaluating?
How are you all measuring or evaluating this program and the success? Is it like if someone moves into two or three, is it getting them back into tier one or two? And like, what's the timing for that, for the program for any given student?
There, I think there are multiple ways to measure the success, but mostly, of course, we want students to return to the core without the need of those interventions and supports. One thing that, that I think is particular and unique to this framework is that similar to the process in special education, it is very much differentiated. And it's according to individual student need and how students develop and progress through what their learning targets and goals are. I would say, one of the less tangible ways to measure success is the effectiveness and collaboration of teams and how they're using that data to make immediate decisions that inform classroom practice, so that it matters in the general setting where the student is spending most of their day. That's really one way. Another way is to think about measuring the successful sharing of teacher practice. So this is not only about meeting student needs, but it's a professional learning opportunity for our staff, and that's something else we look at as well. Julie?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I loved, loved page 49. It was page 49 in the deck. It was the flow chart of how it works and what leads to what. And that was really wonderful for me. Thank you. A couple of questions. As far as determining how frequently teams should meet? For example, I think I did some quick math on tier three teams, and it looks like they're meeting after, between somewhere like 30 and 48 sessions. It, that seems like a lot of sessions between team meetings. How do we decide how frequently teams should meet or what the best practices are there?
Well, we have five SRBI meetings scheduled throughout the year to look at this data. Some of it is around our universal screening assessment period. So that's generally when we look at all kids, including those in SRBI. But the interventionists are progress monitoring frequently. And if they have a concern, like a child is not moving, they would bring it up to the team and call a team meeting. They don't wait if a child is making progress. But we do know, like Malcolm Gladwell, you know, 10,000 hours, that our striving students need more practice. They need more instruction and they need, like learners learn by doing. So they need that, that time and practice. So we do want to make sure that we're giving them that opportunity.
And I, I just think something to add is, as far as like deciding how frequently to meet or how decisions are made, that progress monitoring is really important. So any parent in the room knows when your kids are little and you bring them to buy shoes, right at the beginning of the school year or whenever it is, you think they're going to fit for a really long time. And then all of a sudden, their toes are poking out the front, right? Like, you're like, how do these not fit? Goals, like, the goals are like that, learning goals, right? You can't have a child sit in a learning goal that doesn't, that they've outgrown, because you don't get those instructional minutes back for a child. So it's not just the amount of times that teachers are meeting. And I'm, I'm sure Dan and Christine would agree to this and Julie too. It's also about looking at the data in the interim between those meetings to make sure that instructional decisions are responsive, so that we're meeting kids daily and moving them to the next level of learning.
I think it's over here. Katie and then, and then Robin. Amy, how long should someone be in SRI? What's the typical time period for that?
So I think it depends on how, how they enter and what the skill deficits are. You know, where they are entering at tier one plus, tier two, tier three. You really want to, again, according to the number of weeks, apply interventions before, before leapfrogging into an evaluation process. But again, there are other times where there might be something that our professionals see that would point them to a sooner need for an evaluation. So I think it is, it's just highly depend, highly dependent on the child.
But just like for context, what might be a minimum and a maximum? Like, is it that no one ever leaves SRBI in less than six weeks? Is it that no one is capable, is able to stay in SRBI past six months? Like, I'm just looking for kind of like what the range of variability is.
I would say that typically, students would not move completely out of SRBI prior to six weeks, because we also want to make sure that there's time to prove that the intervention that was trying to address a deficit area or an area of need has actually done that.
And it is possible then for students to continue in SRBI for, let's say, multiple years?
Students would, I would not think that a student would be in SRBI for multiple years.
Okay, so could you handicap like what you might think like a time period might be?
Again, that would be highly dependent upon the student's needs. And you would have multiple people around a table making those decisions. I think it would depend, again, if you're looking at a literacy goal, if you're looking at a behavioral difference that a child has with, that's interfering with their learning. There could be multiple goals that are being addressed simultaneously. And you'd also want to have the parents' input to that, right? Because children are sometimes performing and behaving differently at school and at home. So you want to take the whole child's experience in school and out.
Robbie?
I have a couple of questions. One, on the SRBI behavior, do we have caseloads? And kind of the, the kind of data that you were showing for the other kinds of SRBI on that? And then kind of in conjunction with that, what kind of criteria are used and how are teachers trained for the behavior referrals for SRBI? So that's one question. And then my other question, which is kind of separate, is that there were a lot of SRBI needs in the earlier grades for literacy. I'm just wondering if we have been able to identify things within our curriculum or instruction that maybe we need to improve? Or how we're using the data that we're tracking to try to see if there are gaps in what we should be changing in instruction?
So as far as the SRBI case loads, we can definitely get you that information. And the people that provide the services would be our school psychologists. So they are, they are very trained. And they work with the classroom teachers. In terms of the early, the, the younger students, I mean, really SRBI is about early intervention and prevention. So we have more assessments in the primary grades, and our goal is to catch kids early and provide as much support as we can. We use a, a lot of assessments, or the universal screeners. We have about six different screeners. We test for phonological awareness, because we know that that's really important in the primary grades. And we test in multiple ways. We use a few different batteries. We have the universal screeners, and then we have our own. We use Hegarty for phonemic awareness, and we use their assessment. So we have multiple data points, so that kids don't fall through the cracks. But, but we do know that kids come to school, you know, very differently. And so we want to provide that support early as much as possible. When you look at our numbers, you will definitely see first grade probably has the largest number of students and fifth, in elementary, fifth grade has, has the fewest. So did, did I answer all your questions?
I, I was just wondering if we're seeing gaps in, based on the number of SRBI, for instance, in a certain area where we need to actually improve things or change within the curriculum?
Well, we did, you know, phonemic awareness was an area that we saw. So we did add Hegarty, and now we're, and, and we are seeing success with that. I, I mean, we're always looking at that. There, I, I would say, we're never there. Like, we're always looking at ways that we can improve. But in general, I would say no, based on our, our data, there are, like, we can't say this is a huge gap. I mean, we're looking at some areas that we can strengthen, but not based on, like, this is a gap in, in this group of students.
And, and just one, one thing, who is tracking the SRBI data?
So our teams track it, but our assistant principals, our, our gen ed assistant principals are responsible at the building level. So we have two things that we use. We have district-created database, which are more for our formative assessments. And we all look at those. We look at those in our district's literacy and math meetings, so that we're looking at them across the district. The school-based teams, which are those comprehensive teams with the administrator, the interventionist, the teachers, the special educators, they look at that data. So everybody has their eye on that data.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just add, Robin, to your question also about potential gaps, I would say, thinking about SRBI intervention in the area of speech, especially at the early, early learning years, ELP, K1, 2, will be incredibly important and is absolutely, I hope Shirley's agreeing with me, absolutely connected to our literacy outcomes. So that is something that I think we have identified. We've also talked with the board about our work in the area of vocabulary and writing. And we also need to look at our work in the area, and we've talked about this with gaining comprehension. And I think really, again, a lot of this next level of work is in concert with, with our colleagues in SESS. That's, that will also help me to eliminate some deficits, if any, and how that, how that's addressing.
John?
So I have a question on the last slide, the fiscal 25-year budget. And also, I'd like to thank Katie and I think Danny for bringing this forward. This, we haven't seen this in a long time, so I've never seen it. But back to my question. So Rich, when I look at the scheduling efficiencies, is this net of the two FTE equivalency that, that we get in SRBI? I mean, help me understand how this plays into the, the budget increase chart, if you will. I'm on Dr. Adley's chart 13 with all the, you know, the, which outlines the growth expenditures and efficiencies. And I'm just trying to understand if the, when we look at the scheduling efficiencies and personnel reductions, whether or not that's net of the two FTE equivalent additions to SRBI?
It's the hours available to middle school teachers that equate to. So you're not necessarily adding two FTEs, but there's enough hours available across the school for the equivalent of two FTEs with those efficiencies.
Through the scheduling efficiencies tied into the staff reductions at the middle school. So, you know, I, I just point out that this is another, I think this is an underappreciated part of the budget in which got lost in some of the, the staffing reductions. But to literally be able to double our SRBI capacity through some of these efficiencies that we're looking at, I mean, it, it goes to say, you know, perhaps this would not be available if not we didn't consider some staffing cuts. So I'll leave it at that.
Dave, did you have?
Yeah, I had three. Okay, sorry. So three quick questions. Ms. Jolene, you're talking about, so the work with the psychologists and Dr. Dad, and that she was modeling the leadership, I think, or something, or direct, I don't know what that means.
So, so now that we, so we had a group of psychologists working on our SRBI behavior. But now that Dr. Dad is here, it's just a more comprehensive look at how she can support classroom teachers as well in that, you know, what we talked about is the responsive classroom. But like how, like, because really it starts there with, with how they're managing behavior in the classroom. And then what that tier two and tier three, what other criteria we could be looking at, what other tools?
So, so I think at the scope, I just don't understand what the work is and what that goal is of that work. I mean, what is, is she coached? Is she mentored? Is she, people come to her with problems? Like, I just don't understand the work.
So, so all of that, she, she is looking at, she's working with the psychologists in terms of like what programs can they use? Just like in literacy and math, we have scientifically research-based programs. What other tools can they have at their disposal? And how are they looking at student progress and monitoring that? So that we're more systematic about that.
Sorry, they're all sort of related. And I guess, like, how do we measure the success of those leadership efforts?
Please. May I just add to that, if you're okay with that, Julie? Of course. I'll probably give an example. That's probably the most helpful. So we have a student in kindergarten who's very dysregulated. And our psychologists are trained on how to help shape that, that behavior, how to help reduce that behavior in a very effective way. So Dr. Dad, as well as our school psychologist, and actually, Dr. McCarthy's worked on that as well, kind of have a toolkit set up for teachers of these are some of the ways to manage it. So I have a child who's dysregulated and becomes very frustrated and throws things in the class. What are some of the things I have in my toolkit to help regulate that child? To help them become more regulated, to work on distress tolerance, to get them able to manage that, so they don't have to be removed from a classroom, so they don't have to be put into a specialized environment to do that. And they do that effectively by training teachers. So the teacher may know, here's a skill set. I'm going to walk up to the child when I, when I see them beginning to be frustrated. I'm going to kind of put my hand on their shoulder. Here's just an example and say, do we need some time to talk? So they'll find different things in their toolkits depending on what the child responds to. And when Amy mentioned responsive classroom with a lowercase, she was not talking about the responsive classroom approach. It's about how teachers can be responsive to dysregulated students or students who are having difficulty managing their behaviors in the classroom and have an array of opportunities to really be effective.
And so I guess that's where the question came in, is modeling or developing leader, modeling leadership? I mean, don't the psychologists have training or don't the teachers have training? Like, I would think like, hey, we need a minute, do you need a minute to talk like that? I would think that's something somebody would have learned at some point before Dr. Dad showed up.
I, I'd say teachers are, are on the front line and they have extraordinary experience. And that's their training as well.
Okay.
And, but I think the opportunity to have additional support by school psychologists who are clinically trained in different strategies and methodologies adds to their repertoire.
Got it. Understood.
And I will also just add to that, that we've been hearing a lot from teachers since COVID in particular, that there are just different, more and, and more intensive behavior issues in the classroom.
Oh, I've been hearing that from a number of parents as well. So I guess the second question is, Robin, you were touching on some of the stats, whether it was math, literature, tier two or tier three. Were we getting new data on that or was that the ask you had?
I, I asked for caseload data on the behavior, SRI, SRBI behavior, the caseloads and kind of the data that we had.
Okay, but an update on the current SRBI two and three? Or just, I don't know if that makes sense, or you just, we have the snapshot from end of last year? I just kind of wonder, we have the snapshot in here from the numbers last year, the different caseloads and the different tiers. Would, would we be getting an update to that? Or I, I just wasn't sure if that's what Robin was asking for. I'm kind of curious to see where we are year in, year out. If that's not too much of a lift?
Yeah, we, we will definitely be able to do that. And I would expect also throughout Dr. Dad's presentations that are scheduled, you know, many times throughout the year, that's a reasonable ask during those times as well.
Awesome. And then one last thing. In the next steps slide, you talked about expanding the definition of SRBI. I see support for social, emotional. I don't think this is where we're going, but I have to ask. So if we have a student who's not down with their mood meter, they're getting referred to extra mood meter sessions, or where are we going with that? Like, what is the scope of that?
No. So I think so many of the things that we're talking about with expectations for students with regard to behavior might be things that you would actually see on a report card, especially at the elementary level, right? Those skills that are not so much content-specific related, but more about how students, for example, interact with peers, navigate challenging conflicts, frustration tolerance, all of those things. It doesn't mean that if a child has a difficult time and they're dysregulated in a moment, that they're going to be referred for intervention. This is really when we look at patterned behavior over time, that we think that a student might need support and response to that.
Greg?
Just, just a quick follow-up to Dave's question, just as I've been listening. I mean, this is a bigger question, but just, it sounds like there's maybe upwards, it sounds like there's the teacher, there's Dr. Dad, there's the interventionists, there's other folks. Like, for a, a child who's having issues, it sounds like we may have four, maybe five adults working with that one child at any given time. Am I missing? Is that, is that not right?
You wouldn't have five adults working with that child. You may have five adults on a team who helped, but you probably would have one child, one adult working with a child. The goal of all of this is independence. So all of our interventions, the goal is for children to be independent and self-regulation. It might be a teacher going to speak to a psychologist saying, I need your help with this. It might be a psychologist going to Dr. Dad and say, can I run this past you? What are you thinking about it? So I think there may be teams of professionals who work to support intervention, the ultimate goal being the student being independent and self-regulation.
Okay, so, but so there could be a team of four or five adults working with any given student?
Well, I would say the team working with them, I'd say consulting with each other. It may be one person, I mean, at different times, consulting with each other.
A logistics question. I know we have a space issue, at least at the middle school. Do we have room for 50 extra contact hours? I think interventionists have office spaces that they use for their meetings, but for the teachers that will now be able to offer the same equivalent of 2.0 FTE in intervention hours, where will that happen? Because it sounds like it needs to be discreet and small groups and quite frequent.
So I would say that classroom instruction is different than many of us might remember it. And there are, there's small group instruction happening every day in classrooms as part of general education strategy as well. And so part of tier one and tier one plus and tier two instruction, it is that mostly is implemented within the, the general education setting in the classroom. So I, I don't foresee a space issue.
So they're teaching the class and they're running the intervention small group at the same?
No, but sometimes, right, there, there might be the classroom teacher and there might be somebody who's pulling a small group.
Okay.
Right? So in that, in that space. And we want children to be in the general education. And we want children to be in the general education setting with peers as to the greatest extent possible. And that's typical with or without intervention.
Katie?
Thank you. I have several questions, which I'm happy to take turns on, but first I wanted to ask just a point of clarification, Dr. Adley. John made a point about the proposed budget creating opportunities for there to be more interventionists. But am I right that it's not the elimination of the positions that's creating the opportunities? It's more just a change? Like, there are already teachers that are teaching less than five courses.
Clearly, it's the four to five, it's not necessarily those, those efficiencies, but it's relation efficiencies in general.
Okay, that's an important one. Thank you for that distinction. Amy, can you talk a little bit about what SRBI looks like at middle school? I'm curious if these kids are going to the resource room, if they're missing other classes like language or specials, art, music? And then if it, if they, just how that works also with like a temporary versus a permanent schedule change?
So thank you for raising that. And that right there is the challenge, especially as we, children move into the high school, right, Katie? Because when children's schedule is set in high school, it's typically quarterly, semestral, and it's very hard to move in and out of classes as children move to the secondary level. So what I would say is, the general education setting at the elementary level has a, a little bit more flexibility because the child is typically in there all day with the teacher, coming out for recess, lunch, and their specials. At the middle school, there, it's more what we call ring a bell schedule. So you have math for a certain time, you get up late, you go to the, the other class. So, right, what I would say is, sometimes tier one intervention is during the child's class, during that core period, that, that discipline-specific content when they're also receiving differentiated support. There are other times when children are pulled out for more intensive interventions and it might be in another setting and they might be missing a part of their, a part of their regularly scheduled program, if you will. Dan, I don't know if you have any comments to add to that from a firsthand perspective as an implementer? Sure.
Greg, it's a great question. And if I got it right, it was how the scheduling is implemented at the middle school SRBI.
Yeah, how it looks at the, how it looks at the middle school and then if they're missing classes and if it is, you know, kind of a temporary intervention, what does that do to there?
So yes, there is, we have eight periods of day. And in order to implement and deliver tier two or three services, there is a class or something the students do miss that is made in consultation with the parents to be as least restrictive as possible, two days, it depends on the grade. Typically, they're two or three days, up to five. And where that time is taken from varies, it can be from a music. Usually, it's an elective, unified arts, up until tier three, where it often is foreign lang, or world language.
Thank you so much.
Quick question.
Sarah, yes.
So I, I was actually struck by the numbers at, from, in the middle school level, is that they seem low, that they seem, they weren't a lot. Do you think building in the capacity of having more hours in front of students, do you, do you expect that those numbers might grow? Like, would we adjust the criteria? What, what do you see happening?
Quite frankly, the, how SRBI works over time, more students are identified throughout the process and over the years, so the pool of students whom were identifying for SRBI has shrunken based upon previous identifications and, and that, those, that factor. The, the students we work with have very high needs. It was mentioned in the, and the number of students with ELS sports that are needed, they are increasing. We have students coming in, it used to be just more students who came from out of district. The, the level of education here in Darien and our DIRG is very high. And when they come from another district, in state or out of state, there's also a, there's often a period of time where the student needs support. Sometimes with that support, over six to eight, six months, the student is able to succeed and be equal to his peers. Other times, it's not the case. And when we, I think to answer the question about special education and numbers and all that, we, when we do not achieve success in SRBI over that period of time, that's when we begin to ask the questions, what else is there? And we recommend going to PPT1 with testing and trying to answer those questions.
Thank you.
If I could just add one other thing, as far as would we identify more students? I don't think we'd look to change criteria more now, but we might look at other assessments that would indicate a need to put a child for referral to SRBI. And we would now have greater flexibility because we have more opportunities throughout the schedule. So that, I think, could help us better meet the needs of children with, with less impact to their, their schedule for the general classes.
Thank you.
I would just like to add one point, we have had the model of teachers administering SRBI before. It's dictated based upon the schedule and where there are departments that have additional capacity to work with students. So over, since 2016, we've had cohorts of teachers, departments that have assisted us in working with students. It often is those students whom have trouble in the academics, but it's often related to student behaviors. And it's very hard at the middle school level to sometimes pinpoint what is the exact source of the issue, because as they're evolving is, and, and, and growing into young adults, there are a lot of factors that go into play. And we try not to be overreactive to what is currently happening, but look at the past and the future as well.
And just an added benefit of that is the trained and skilled interventionists working, again, alongside the general education teacher around the core content. And for the general education teacher to be really targeting the intervention around what they see in their classroom, the period, it might be the period before.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you all for that report. We will get, Amy will get the data on the SRBI behavioral, thank you. And
final question?
Yes.
I was just, Amy, I was just curious if there was a manual for SRBI, like if there was a governing document?
There are multiple manuals and resources available on the CSTE website. We're happy to provide links to those.
I have a few follow up questions, but I'm happy to submit them in an email.
Okay.
I, I think if that's okay, given the time, that would be great. Thank you.
Um, okay, with that, well, thank you all very much. We'll move on to the update on
I'm sorry, thank you Christine, who's I know
Thank you, Christine. Um, update on PDEC Professional Development Evaluation Committee. Amy, I would, we have read the packet, I would ask that you keep it pretty tight. We'll, we'll discuss this again, it'll be over time. So.
Um, we are, Barry, you're still there, you're a trooper. For hanging around. Marge, Cyon, Director of Human Resources, and Barry Palmer, DEA President, and I are pleased to provide the board with a very brief update with regard to the PDEC charge for this year. And I would just start by saying really briefly that PDEC is, I think, a primetime opportunity for administration to work alongside our partners in DEA and DAA around teacher growth, leader growth, and towards improved student outcomes. And this is one of the first things that Barry and I started to work on, I think even pre-July, when I was visiting district in June. And so now it's exciting that some of it is coming to fruition. Would you agree, Barry?
Um, yeah, I, it's, I think it was our first conversation we had in June before you officially started, it was centered around changing our PDEC, not only because of the state's new guidelines, but also because I think, and Marge would probably back me up on this, we, we've kind of agreed that this was something that both administration and teaching staff felt the previous model wasn't being effective. And I just also, I just would like to say, to thank Amy for allowing me to be, or Dr. Fedigan and Marge for allowing me to be part of this presentation, just because we have disagreements on the budget, the work of the district goes on and we're all on Team Darien students, regardless of our disagreements. So thank you for allowing me to be part of it.
Absolutely, this is really important work to be done. So as our board chairs indicated, the boards received the packet. One of the things I would just draw the board's attention to is this plan, PDEC is really the Professional Development Evaluation Committee. One significant aspect of the work of PDEC is to develop a plan for educator support, educator evaluation and support for educators and leaders. So this is talking about teachers, service providers, and our administrative team, everyone really below the rank of superintendent. You've already seen the history around educator and leader evaluation and support. You may remember that during the pandemic, flexibilities were offered to districts. And that was a time where really around the state of Connecticut, there was great discussion around the effectiveness of the original plans for teacher evaluation and, and leader evaluation throughout the state. And so that was when the state and districts started to talk about not just Darien districts throughout the state, around how a system like this might improve grow, and the growth of educators and also growth of students. I linked, I should say, we linked in the memo, the full guidelines. I would encourage the board to read those guidelines. The principles that are offered here are really around what the state and the people that were on the task force, which were not only teachers, but were administrators and representatives from different educational councils, including AFT and CEA, the Connecticut Association of School Superintendents, the Association of School Administrators in Connecticut, they were all a part of coming up with what should be the frame for the work of revising educator evaluation and support plans. You can see what those guiding principles are here. Some of the highlights of that work is to have a single point competency. And something that you might recall is that our current plans across the state of Connecticut are rated on a four-point scale rubric. And so a change at the state level is to have a single point competency rather than that four-point scale. There are many areas of the, the work that will remain the same, like goal setting, observation, how we progress monitor the growth of professional educators throughout the year. And that we also have to, of course, have an opportunity for dispute resolution and support plans. You know, the board will see that every time we're thinking about doing work in district, we are aligning to the district vision, we are aligning to the work of the strategic plan, in particular, goals one and four, support the work of PDEC this year. At this point, I'm turning it over to Marge.
Right, so I, I think I just want to reinforce mostly that a rating and a student test score has never helped us to counsel a teacher out of their employment in Darien. It has actually gotten in the way. So I know that, you know, there might be some trepidation about not having slows to learning outcomes or four-point ratings, but I'm just telling you, in the 10 years I've been here, it has never helped us to have a difficult conversation with a teacher. So, but just to know how important this work is, we have 45 volunteers who are agreeing to meet, meet at least monthly and probably twice a month. They represent all departments, all levels, administrators and teachers. They've been asked to review the Connecticut guidelines, which include the non-negotiables, which are the must haves, and best practices, which we'll probably do most of those as well. We met initially and developed a vision for the committee, and we're meeting again tomorrow to discuss each subcommittee's work.
Barry, please.
Yep. And just to echo what Marge was saying, the, the, the point of the teacher evaluation plan isn't to get rid of teachers, it's to help grow our teachers and, and to, to really tap the potential. And it's just a cycle of continued progress. Even our best teachers, we all feel we can still continue to grow in our career. One of the things that we've done is we've created subcommittees for the, for, for the committee, or for the PDEC committee. And we have these subcommittees, and they're actually co-chaired by both teachers and administrators. So we make sure both sides of the conversation and both, both sides of the evaluation support plan are being considered as they make recommendations. I think Dr. Fedigan, this is you.
And the timeline for our work moving forward, as Marge indicated, we're meeting again tomorrow. There are representatives from not only the various school levels, but also from the various disciplines, including support providers. So we'll be thinking about a differentiated plan that meets the needs of classroom teachers and our related service providers. And what we'd like to do is bring forward to the board updates as we, as we continue in the work throughout the several months into the, into the spring. We're hoping that there would be an opportunity for the board to engage in a first reading, hopefully in May, with an eventual vote on the new plan. I know we have tentatively, I think, scheduled three Board of Education meetings in June. So we would be hopeful that that would be the case, because we're meant to implement July 1 in 2024. So there would be some significant learning that we would have to prepare, professional learning for our admin staff and our teaching staff, not only for new teacher orientation, but for all staff returning to school in the fall. And we have also identified the dates for PDEC to meet throughout the year, so you can anticipate your opportunity to progress monitor our work in this area according to those dates. We'll have additional news to share. Would you share anything else there in March that you might have forgotten? And I know we're charged with going very quickly here, it's meant to just be a cursory overview.
I'm good.
Four questions, ideally pretty high level. Yes, Julie?
Real quick one. Just to make sure, Amy, you said that the board will get updates prior to a first read in May with an approval in June, is that right? Just to keep it, okay, so it sounds great, but very top line, which is terrific. Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you all very much for the overview.
Barry, thank you for hanging on there, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, that'll move on to discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift for Darien High School Band Program, Ms. Thompson.
Hello, everyone, thanks for having me. So Darien Music for Youth received a $5,000 donation. Actually, Darien Music for Youth is looking to give the Darien High School Band a $5,000 donation that they received from Mara and Eric Peters, who are the parents of Teddy Peters, a former DHS student and, and very talented and interested band student. And they say that this donation is an appreciation of John Grauer's work at Darien High School. Mr. Grauer's exceptional skills not only inspire amazing music, but produce incredible people. We will be forever grateful to him for being that teacher in high school that profoundly helped Teddy navigate his teenage years. Darien High School is very lucky to have him, and we hope this donation will help him do exactly what he does best. With so much respect, Mara and Eric Peters. So we are, I was very happy to read that about Mr. Grauer, not that that surprises me. And, you know, all of our, our teachers across, across the district. If approved, we plan to use it to purchase a few professional quality trombones. We have some really talented trombonists in our junior and senior class, several of whom made Northern Regionals in our auditioning for Allstate. And this will help them immediately achieve those goals, and then we'll keep them on in the department for many years to come.
Thank you. And thank you to Darien Music for Youth and the Peters family. Are there any questions?
Did Teddy play the trombone?
That's a great question, I actually don't know the answer to that. I wish I did, sorry. No questions? Okay. With that, may I have a motion to accept the contemplated gift for the Darien High School Band Program? Robin, seconded by Sarah, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. And thank you, Colleen, for staying on.
Absolutely.
Good night, Colleen, thank you.
Nice to Peters, too.
Yeah. Next discussion and possible acceptance of contemplated gift for Darien High School Boys Varsity Lacrosse Program.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Great, thank you. So you have there in front of you tonight, a contemplative gift of the Blue Wave Booster Club to the Boys Lacrosse Program for a couple of items. First being would be rain pants for the team to wear during inclement weather games on the sideline. Just to note, the girls' lacrosse program does already have a set of rain pants. So we took that into consideration when looking over this gift. The second item that would be donated to the program would be a shooting target, it would be placed in front of the crosshairs and actually could be used by either the boys or the girls' lacrosse program, although the boys made the request, but it could be used by either, either gender. So you have here those two requests from the Blue Wave Booster Club to the Darien High School Boys Lacrosse Program.
Okay. With thanks to the Blue Wave Booster Club, do we have any board questions about this gift? Okay. With that, may I have a motion to accept the contemplated gift for the Darien High School Boys Varsity Lacrosse Program? That's Greg, seconded by John, all those in favor? That is unanimous, and again, thank you to the Booster Club.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Chris, for hanging on. Okay. Follow up discussion on January 6th, board meeting questions on 20 Follow-up discussion on January 6th, board meeting questions on 24, 25, proposed Board of Education budget. Dr. Adley.
To the staff and parents, thank you for hanging in there this evening. Much appreciated and people, people online. So we'll put up the responses. These responses are posted. The, the materials were modified before this meeting. So if, if anybody in the audience wants to follow along, you can certainly do that. Just so we remind that overall, this budget provides the capacity to support our curriculum instruction, our interventions and support for all kids and the mental health support for students. And the way it does it is really through efficiencies, enrollment, the administration restructure, and in some cases, the use of grants. So with that, what I tend to do here is just put, the questions are, as you see them, the board didn't get this much sooner than before this meeting, so.
Can't read it. Do you guys have paper copies?
No.
We haven't received.
Yeah.
No.
We normally get it at this time for this.
Yeah. I mean, we only realistically need to do some of this, put this together for, for Tuesday. I mean, when we start to. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's, it's something to bookmark for next year because this is typically how we end up doing it. But it is a fair point that this follow-up Tuesday is very quickly behind and we don't have much time to review. So.
What, what's happened in the past is we just kind of glance at the questions. If there's any glaring questions that are missing, you add to it and then we revisit it in further discussions. Because we only had Monday and Tuesday to get through this.
Well, given the hour on top of that. So let's go through it pretty quickly.
Jill, can I just ask a quick point just to frame this conversation? I also have not been able to spend time on this document. I haven't been able to cross-reference if all my questions made it in. So I just want to make sure that there will be space, that if something did get left out of this, that it can be submitted by the board after we've had time. Thank you.
I do, I do think we probably should decide when the, the next meeting will be to have an opportunity to further discuss.
Okay, we have, we can do that next Wednesday or next Thursday. Who is available on Wednesday? We'll try that again. Julie, you, that's a yes or a no? You won't know until Wednesday. You are yes or no? You are yes? That is one, two, three, four?
Yeah, maybe.
I'm a maybe, do you?
Okay. Do we have, who is available on Thursday night?
I have in my calendar that we're meeting with other government bodies that night. Is that not accurate?
Is that a special Board of Admin?
Yes, it's meant to be, yes.
Not in the evening. Usually that's in the day. Isn't that that one in the day?
No. No, that's the one that we all saw on the table now.
Yes, it's, it's part of that.
It's BOE, BOF, RTM, FNB, RTM Education.
Eighteenth.
On the eighteenth. That's Thursday.
We'll follow up.
Yes. I'm sorry.
All right. Let's go through the questions at a high level. We'll pick another meeting. We have, we'll have something next week because we have actually a lot of high-level topics for next week as well. And then we also have the evening of the 23rd.
So then with your understanding, I'll just,
We'll do it before.
I'll just go through this rather quickly, just contextually, okay? Did we look at all the structures? Yes, we looked at all of the administration, both at the central services level and all administration across the district as part of the, the option. I'm not going to read this to you. You can see our rationale for not considering dean of students. Providing the chart that includes special education administrators, that's included. So I'm not going to, unless you want me to pull it up, I'll be sure that, right? Okay. So it's there. So is the DIRG administrators. Why are we not looking at counselor loads? We feel as if we are in a good place, middle of the DIRG, so to speak, in terms of counselor student ratio.
Dr. Adley, what was that regarding the request for the ratio to include special education administrators or is that a separate?
I think it was, I think it was tied to that a little bit, that why were we not considering? I guess I'll phrase it as since, since you're looking at administration for, for special education, we have other people who have to go to special education. We also maybe have other people who spend time in the regular setting and are overloaded both with special education and that. So have we not looked at counselors? Because they have their front facing with their kids maybe more than someone else is. So it was just to look at those particular ratios.
I think that might have been my question. And I think Robin is understanding the spirit of it. It wasn't about counselor loads as, as it pertains to their work as counselors.
Yes.
I was, I think I simply mentioned counselors as one of many people, including psychologists, that attend PPT. So my point in asking that question was why only administrators and not everyone who attends a PPT?
All right, okay. Well, we, we can continue that discussion. We can continue the discussion. Why is identification rate so high? I'll cut through the chase in terms of my own words.
Can we move this slide?
These are, the classification rates do just reflect the individual decisions of the PPTs. And I'll say that we continue to be recognized for our high-quality program. And that's not differentiated from the high-quality programs that we provide for, for special services. Day in the life of assistant principal is, will be included in the next presentation. It says the 17th, but we have to agree what date that is. Who will evaluate the word language teachers, the principals and the assistant principals? Why was the word language department chair chosen? I sort of shared that at the last meeting, but it's the size of the department. Fewest graduation requirements, the fundamental program is in place. We're well-placed for the programs that we're actually offering. How will the student experience change in word language chair if it's eliminated? There is no direct impact of students per se, face-to-face. They have their classroom teachers. Nothing is being changed from a student perspective. Can we see the organizational chart for administrators? It's attached. As are the high school.
Do you have a new org chart of proposed changes?
Yes, that is what, that is what, yeah. I think what we'll also try and do in addition to the org chart is try to create for the next meeting another sort of visual that maybe it's not this org chart, but it's maybe more applicable to how it operates in practice.
Thank you.
The high school clubs are attached. I think I've already done that one, haven't I? The, what is our total PD budget? That's attached. The consulting services, they are listed when you go into the link. Coming out of an eliminated team, have more reimbursement. So we've sort of touched upon that a little bit today. And we'll come, we'll come back with recommendations. Case load for the teachers. And what is, that was the, okay, I thought there was a link there, but there's not a link there. But you can, you can, you can just read that as, as it states. The day in the life of instructional para, I put in what the paraprofessional, we just took one from a school, is meant to be doing. And I will say that a paraprofessional will be doing a lot of different things in addition to the schedule that you see attached in terms of parent kids put their coats on and helping teachers and everything in between. I haven't listed all of those things that, I can't even list all of the things that a teacher does in the classroom in terms that you don't see and so on. So I'm not leaving things out like they're helping in the hallway or otherwise. But you can see a day in the life, that is what they are meant to be doing. It is not what they are doing. The reason we're changing it is because they're not actually doing that. Uniform costs are attached. The DIRG comparisons for ticket prices are also. The safety equipment was asked for, so you can peruse that. What is the impact of migration at the enrollment? Overall, the enrollment doesn't impact, from my perspective, overall, the enrollment does not impact the implementation of these efficiencies. That's the big takeaway for, for me. Certainly, we do have some transition from students from eighth to ninth grade. And you can see their, over the last 10 years, the migration rate has been 0.01%. So for the most part, people are staying in the district. The proposal, how is teaching a fifth class impact this proposal? Well, it opens up opportunities for some interventions.
On the migration one?
Yes.
Are you just saying that the in-migration is just number of students coming in and then net of students exiting?
So you're looking, you're looking at the migration rate if you're, you have a sixth to seventh grade, if they're all moving up. But if people either move in or those people move out, does it, what's the change just on that basis? So if it's a sixth grade moving up to the seventh grade, that's your base. What's the change from people moving out and the change from people moving in?
No, Dr. Adley, what I was referring to, the in-migration is people moving to Darien from another town.
Yeah.
That was, that was the enrollment analysis.
Yeah, that is, that is, that is built in there.
Okay.
That's what, that's, that's what that, sorry, pleasure. That's what that reflects.
And you're saying it's flat, Dr. Adley? Because for the numbers, if 100 sixth graders are moving to seventh, if two move in, two tend to leave, so it tends to be.
Well, it's not completely flat, like just, just on the basis. I mean, that's, that's 0.01% of the total base.
Rich, do you want to add anything to that?
So the, the net migration, which is the move ends netted against the move outs, is rather negligible. We do typically see a number of students who move in. But in the middle school period, we also see a number of students who choose to go to parochial school and they choose to go to private school. And so when that happens, it compresses the tip.
That, that's the point that I was making. People are coming into the district. There's also people going.
Yes. Correct. The fourth class of five classes gives us an opportunity to provide some of these services. You can see the class sizes that are under 18 and the class sizes that are over.
Make a comment about that, the, the link. I was not able, I wanted to sort those classes. I wasn't able to. Is that something that we could do?
Well, we can sort, we can certainly sort them for you.
Yeah. It was, it was a view-only spreadsheet.
The SRBI, you can see that the, the number of students in the presentation is saving. I won't go over, the next question is another SRBI. Paraprofessionals and built-in substitute allocated based on enrollment and our section. So we have those comparisons for you as we also have the comparisons for the formulas that we use for elementary formulas for paraprofessionals. What would we collect in the auditorium? That's just a, if we charge, that amount, that's the amount of money that we would, the revenue we would realize. Any tickets, any other districts sell tickets? Nope. What's the student impact that combined in the art and music supervision? There is no impact on students as, as they will all interface with their, their actual classroom teachers. There's no change to their classroom teacher structure. Clubs and councils break down are as listed.
I'm not sure that link's accurate. Maybe we'll double check.
It, you don't need to, accurate or linked?
It's coming up just with music for Ox Ridge.
Okay.
Wasn't a full data set, at least what I'm getting. Sorry.
I'll check that, David. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
DIRG comparison for the visual arts, you can see as they are printed there for the various districts. The only ones that have administrators are New Canaan and Westport. How many students enrollment in the art and the music? Again, we've included that, but it excludes the instrumental lessons. What options do we have to improve staff with multiple devices? I mean, essentially, we're, for the administration at the secondary level, we're phasing out the, the, the desktops per se. So I think this, we're in a relatively good place with it as we phase things out. They've already been phased out at the elementary level.
Excuse me for interrupting. I think that was a question about teachers.
I'm sorry, I took it as administration.
I believe it was about teachers. Looking at that for next time.
I think I brought that up, Jill. It originally was a response to an admin replacement cycle. And then I think the conversation morphed into broader potential teachers or other administrators. So I don't think it was settled what the scope was, but the scope for budget purposes was solely administrators.
Okay.
So not quite sure where we left it, but that's my recollection. Don't know if that helps anything, but that's.
Are you satisfied with that answer? Or does anybody want to talk about teachers and devices?
I need to spend some time on the dock, Jill. I'm sorry.
I'd like to hear about teachers. Thank you.
The libraries have a healthy collection. They also, the HHR, we're just in a wee state of transition. We have actually, we also have books that are stored even at Ox Ridge at the moment, right? Has taken the time to get a climate ties to the actual library and the operation of it, the number of books that we need. The other schools, some of the libraries are even storing some, some different furniture and, and books and so on. So we're just, we're at a point where I just think we need to calibrate again, just as we get through this HHR process. I don't think it's a, it's a time to be necessary to be spending on additional books if, if we don't need to. The comparable tuition for pre-K programs? The capacity for ELP that we've, we've always been, it's always been aligned to this enrollment. Do we need more substitute coverage for ELP? No, not, not other than what has been requested or otherwise. And the, the opportunities to bring services in-house, we'll continue to discuss that at the next meeting, whenever that date has, has been settled.
One last question.
Just one question, just on the, the comparison to the other preschools. Has the Darien proposed ELP tuition already been set? Or is that something that could be revised?
Can we just, can you just confirm there's a status of that?
So the 11,500 is what's proposed and then it's up to the board to decide whether they want to keep it, increase it, lower it. Your, your vote.
Okay.
Were we also going to get the, the teacher-student ratios for this to compare? Yeah. Just so that we can see, like, if we're at two to one and they're at six to one, we should be charging more.
Katie, thank you. I have a follow-up question on number 26. Do we need more substitute coverage for ELP given a five-day-per-week schedule? My recollection from Saturday's discussion was that someone had asked about that, given the requirements of PPTs. I did want to ask as well, though, if evaluations had been considered. My understanding is that a lot of the ELP staff would use Fridays to conduct evaluations of, of children at other schools. That was kind of a travel and evaluation day. So I'm curious about that impact as well.
So we did discuss that. Do you want to, will we add that to the discussion for next, or do you want to answer it now or?
Laura will address that when she presents her ELP proposal on whatever day that is, if it's on the 17th.
Thank you.
The loss of the elementary curriculum coordinator, we've outlined the, the alternative that we have put in place in, in there. And we heard tonight, one of the teachers saying that that's not, that's not ideal and we shouldn't do that. It's, it's one of the couple of changes that I would like not to have to do, but in order to move forward, we proposed it and we put an alternative that we feel will, will meet the needs of the district. Turnovers listed, salary savings are listed. The bus schedule, types of buses are also listed. So I recognize that it's very late and we didn't have, we don't have a time to thoroughly look at this, but just, you'll have an opportunity to, to look at it in a further discourse at the next meeting. Thank you.
John is pointing out to me on, on the, in the, for Sarah's point, in the, in this, your presentation and in our budget calendar, we do have a meeting on Thursday, the 18th.
Yes.
We'll just use that time for the remaining topics.
Yes, we do.
On the turnover that you have up there, do we have any forecasts for expected turnover, either based on like tenure of?
For this year?
Go ahead, Rich.
For the coming years?
So it depends. So we, we do look at like age of teachers in terms of retirement. There's somebody who's going to leave to go to another district. That's a little harder to predict. So this year compared to next year, we're looking at about a 12.5% drop. So that's kind of around what we saw this, last year into this year. And so for next year, we're forecasting essentially a 12.5% drop, the same level of savings that we saw this year.
Okay, so that's already factored into.
Julie?
Thanks. Just to go back to what you just said, Jill, that our meeting on the 18th is with other town partners, but also we have our own meeting, so we can continue our discussions then, is what we're saying?
Yeah, it's here. So, okay, we can hear from them and then we can continue our work. Okay.
Yeah. So next Thursday.
So just doing Thursday, not Wednesday and Thursday? Just Thursday. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions on that?
Just one on the salary savings. So the $274,000 for fiscal. So the $274,000 for fiscal 24 as of December, I think we have, have we not gotten a report on that yet?
So it was 105 as of the end of October. We don't do a November report because there's only one board meeting in December. So the increase specifically between the 105 relates to the vacant DHS library media specials and the two elementary word language specials. So that'll be at the next finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Do we email you if, when we get a chance to go through this? If there are any things that we didn't see get covered or get covered the way we were thinking of it to follow up with you?
You guys can email Alan and just copy.
Copy.
Copy me, please, yes. With that, we'll, thank you for the question. We'll move on to the personnel report, March.
I know it's late, but I have to take one minute to point out Nadine Vassal retiring. She's worked in the district for almost 48 years and it'll be a great loss for all of us. We'll ask her to join us at the retiree celebration in June and we'll do something special for her here.
What is the date of her retirement?
January 31st.
January 31st, okay. We can. Thank you for pointing that out, March. With that, I'll move on to public comment.
Anyone in person would like to participate, please come up to the podium. Please state your name and address. You'll have the 13 minutes, 13 minutes, three minutes. Three minutes. Crystal Hill, 300 Brookside Road, CDSP co-chair. After listening to the scheduling consultant presentation and resulting discussion this evening, we have concerns that the plans for eliminating teachers at MMS have not been well thought out or planned prior to the inclusion in this budget. We were told during both the Thursday meeting and Saturday budget meetings that the reduction of teachers would result in elimination of an entire team from either sixth or seventh grade. This was made very clear during those presentations. Tonight, we learned that the decision on the structure of the new, the, how teachers will be eliminated still seems to be very much an open question. Dr. Adley mentioned possible team modifications versus the elimination of an entire team, but we have no information on what that might actually look like. Parents deserve to know before the budget process concludes exactly how their child's education and daily life at MMS will change due to, due to a reduction in staff. It is not enough to simply say, we are still figuring it out, when you are proposing such a significant change at MMS. Additionally, regarding the elimination of FTEs in the area of elementary specials, it appears based on the discussions that there will be, there still seems to be some uncertainty about how that will be structured in terms of scheduling. It also seems that potentially some of the data and inputs that were given to the consultant may not have been accurate, specifically in the area of music. It is our request that members of the Board of Education continue to push for more information and clarity on how these proposed scheduling changes and resulting elimination of teachers will affect the students, the students making, students making any decisions on the elimination of these teachers before the budget concludes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Hi, Dan Kenzick. I live in Fairfield, Connecticut. I'm a teacher here in Darien for 27 years. First, I want to thank the board, Dr. Adley, for presenting the budget. We learned about the budget this past week. The board's questions have been thoughtful and quite frankly, similar to those much of the staff. As noted by Dr. Levinson, this scheduling was done with consult from admin and very limited, any consult from teachers. And thus, some of the questions we have, including tonight and hopefully the education that we're providing, that some of these models have existed in the past, is new and can help solve some of the district's efficiencies. First of all, it was very refreshing to hear that the max numbers are not the recommendation of the consultant and should not be used as scare tactics to say what we could do. Secondly, teachers, as I mentioned earlier, in the SRBI program, whom do not have five classes, have taught SRBI to students in the past. This is not new. About the analysis, does it incorporate all factors? There are multiple language offerings, multiple levels of math, co-taught classes. How can these numbers equally become 23 or 22 or 24 with all of those variables in place? If he's offering to help, we'll take the help. In Aspen, one of the facts that came to mind was that co-taught classes for teachers actually have two different classes. I'm hoping that those two classes were merged as one class, but they're listed in Aspen as two separate sections. And ultimately, if we were to go to the model of teaching five classes, with team eating, lunch and prep contractual obligations, this leaves no room for staff to do any of the current duties that we do, including but not limited to lunch, study halls, that help the building function for all students. Those are student contact minutes, where teachers provide services and positive impacts to the building. Teaching five, keeping a team model, that is not possible. Finally, we want to work side-by-side with principals. As a DEA rep, and I did not mention that earlier, I am a DEA rep. Teachers have come to me with concerns and questions. They've shared stories. One of them recently was that in the past, they were consulted on the schedule. They were presented the schedule and offered to look at it and provide feedback on ways to improve it. This past year, that teacher shared with me, he or she was not consulted. I was, it was also shared that student choice was limited in certain areas and that sections were not opened up. And students had to make other choices. As we shrink staff, will the options still be there? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone online would like to participate, please use the raised hand option. Barry Palmer, you are unmuted.
I think she's the one in person.
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry, Barry.
Laura Peshkrae, 11 Parsons Walk. I appreciate all of the very thoughtful questions that were asked of Dr. Levinson. I don't really feel like he gave any one of you really good answers. I do feel the importance of a schedule being looked at before decisions like this, cutting FT, cutting all these positions out. I also want to understand why other areas like capital improvement projects and technology, why aren't those areas looked at in terms of cutting? Like, why do we need a snow blowing machine for Ox Ridge and the district? That's a $56,000 expense when it really hasn't snowed that much. And I bet we can, like, get somebody to snow removal at a much lower cost. Like, why aren't, why aren't other areas being explored? And why are we sitting here? I don't understand it and I, I plead with everyone here not to make rash decisions without concrete information and really understanding what this looks like on paper. And it will affect the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in person? Barry Palmer, you are unmuted and recognized.
Thank you, Barry Palmer, Dan Barry. I, I think Dan hit a lot of what I was thinking. And I think one of the things that's really frustrating as someone who prefers to work side-by-side with administration is the fact that these changes in programming are happening through the budget process means we can't lean on the institutional memory of someone like a Dan Kenzick, who has 27 years in the district. He actually held my role years ago. And I can tell you, I used his institutional memory a lot to inform my decision-making. I understand the board did look at the class sizes in '22. But what I was trying to convey with my earlier public comment is we didn't actually look at the class sizes in light of the makeup of our current classes. As the board found out today, on top of our students identified as special education or five before, we also have to implement tier-one SRBI supports in our classes as well. I am telling you, your teachers are stretched thin. You guys just need to be really sure before you make that vote that you're going to be able to look yourself in the mirror and say that you are providing your kids everything they need. Because I am telling you, the teachers are stretched thin, K-12. K-12, they're on the hamster wheel. It's not just one level. And just to reiterate the point, teachers teaching a fifth SRBI class has been available to administration since the teachers agreed to teach a fifth class two contracts ago at the middle school. And it's, I, I can't, it, it's really unfair to blame them and mention equity when they've agreed a long time ago to teach that fifth class. And especially in light of eliminating a team of colleagues. If this is, it's not the type of conversation that helps retention and recruitment. I can tell you that. With that, thank you. You guys are working really hard and we really do appreciate it. So with that, good night.
Thank you. There are no more raised hands at this time.
That may have a motion to adjourn. That's John, seconded by Sarah. All those in favor, that's unanimous. Thank you all.